Good evening, everyone. April 11, 2022 Blue Ribbon Pension Review Committee Special Meeting. I'm going to conduct a roll call right now. Committee Member Amirian.
I'm present.
Committee Member Bain.
Present.
Committee Member Kedikian.
Present.
Committee Member Manning.
Here.
Committee Member Masias.
Present.
Committee Member Michaels.
Present.
Committee Member Milano.
Here.
Committee Member Nelson. Committee Member Wolfson.
Here.
Committee Member Finch.
Here.
Committee Member Vins.
Here.
Committee Members Zakarian.
Here.
Committee Member Paulus.
Here.
Thank you. Item one, regular business agenda. One A, the agenda for the April 11, 2022 Blue Ribbon Pension Review Committee Special Meeting was posted on April 7, 2022 on the bulletin board outside the. Item number two, committee and staff comments.
Well, I may want to add a couple of comments that I think that the production or the written minutes are probably one of the best I've seen during our whole, during all the number of months. So I want to congratulate whoever it is in the staff that prepared the minutes. Very nice job. Thank you.
In direct response to the concern over last week's, we made sure this week's were especially good.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'm just, I have a question. I was kind of hoping that we would have a draft of the report in our agenda packet, but it seemed like we didn't have that yet. And is there, what's happening here?
Yeah, so the plan was, was and is, I should say, that this, that we were going to vote today on some of the key components that would go into a draft report. And that we have a meeting set, and John, you can remind me the date for review of the draft report.
May 2nd.
Yes. I also may want to add that I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, listen, you haven't finished.
Seeing the report then, the final report, I mean, how is that going to work if we have one more meeting and we're gonna, you know?
The idea. I'm sorry. The idea, Ms. Wolfson, is that this committee is going to take positions on the various different recommendations that will end up going through the report after today. Mr. Wolfson will go back and actually draft a copy of that report provided to this committee in advance of the May 2nd meeting. At which time you'll see it, you'll have an opportunity to discuss it, and if there's any changes that need to be made at that point, that'll be the one more opportunity to do, to do so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Wolfson, R. Zakarian here?
Yes, sir.
Sir, is this the okay time to maybe state some opinions based on the review of the recommendations that we had?
Uh, hang on, just, just, just a hair.
No problem. You got it.
Next item, I think, I think. Mr. Milano.
Thank you very much. I've, I sent you a copy of two PowerPoints that depict employee salary and pension trends for the city as a whole and payments. And then to some individual positions that I want to submit for part of the preamble that we mentioned last week concerning giving the background trends that we have had in the past 20 years and where data is available since 2012. So I like to be able to show those trends because I want them considered as part of the packet to be given to the city council. One of the objectives that I think we have is just not simply to look over what could be done concerning the pension debt that we have, but rather what, how is this impacting the city and, and what information may be relevant to them when they consider the negotiation process during the MOUs? And I've, so I'd like to be able to have that be considered, and I submitted a copy.
Yes.
To you and to the coordinator here. The, the other thing I had in mind, and I was thinking about this during this past week, that if this were, let's say, a, a university course, right, where we begin to learn, attend our seminars, participate in the discussions. And now we come to like the final exam and people are basically giving their opinion. But we really have no idea as to how well the members understood the various different topics, or whether they're even conversant with anyone, because, you know, so many members did not speak. And very often they basically signed in or called in saying that they were present, but after that we heard nothing from them. And so if, if I were a college instructor coming forward and say, all right, we're going to help the city make this, you know, billion dollar recommendation, do all of us are at the same level with regard to the knowledge to be able to say, my opinion is as good as anybody's here, right? What is the level of knowledge and awareness, right? Do people really understand the implications? Because we never really considered in depth the comments by Rick Cole, for example. He gave us some amazing information, and we never really had a discussion or even heard from many of our, of our committee members with regard to several of the issues that he presented that I thought were worthwhile discussing. So we don't have the sufficient participation to be able to tell how well a particular member really understands it. And we had many presentations for which we did not discuss the merits of many of the topics that were presented. So I see a significant amount of deficiency with regard to the amount of knowledge and discussions to gauge, even for myself, how well do some of these members really understand some of the complex issues that we discussed during the past six months? So those are my observations, and it's self-concern to me. So I wish we had an opportunity to also ask questions of some of the members who will be voting to figure out what is the reason why your opinion leans in that direction? You know, show me the part of your thinking. That way I can, you know, validate or reject the, the opinion that you're giving, because there may be something missing or something that is misinterpreted. Anyway, those are my observations on, on the process that we have.
So let me respond in two different ways. First, you know, I actually have a lot of confidence in folks on, on this committee who've listened really carefully. And so, you know, I, that, but beyond that, I don't, I don't know what to say about that. But as to the issue of the, the charts that have been prepared by Jason, it was my thought, and I think this is probably good because this includes staff comments, so I think it could include Jason presenting those charts. And I, I wanted them to be presented at the beginning of the session. So this would probably be as good a time as any, if that's okay, Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfson.
So Jason, can you?
Do you, am I driving, John?
You're driving, yes.
Okay, let me just bear with me one second.
Jason, I can screen share if you want to tell me how to.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine, Luke. If you're, if you're ready to go, I, it's kind of what I thought was going to happen. Or, yeah, that's fine.
If I make suggest, make a suggestion, can you make that into a view mode?
Yeah, if you can just go into presentation mode. Thank you. Okay, so the first couple of charts are going to look at, well, it just disappeared off my screen here. We go back to. It's interesting. Don't think this is slide one, Luke. Yep, here we go. Okay. Did everyone see that?
I can see it.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so this first one goes back to 2012, and these are four different positions, sworn positions, two out of the fire department, two out of the police department. And these are, these are perceval, perceval wages, and these are average averages. So what we did was we looked at employees that had worked in the position for the full year. We didn't want anyone who'd started mid-year or partial years or retired or hired, whatever the case may be. Because when you start dealing with averages, those can kind of throw those off. So we looked for employees in that job classification that held it for the full year, and these are perceval wages. This isn't necessarily, you know, box five W2 taxable wage or anything like that. There are some earnings that aren't subject to perceval wages. So I just, I just wanted to make that note. And so this is the trending for the, for the various, various positions since 2012 through 2021. So if you go to the next slide, Luke. For some reason, this isn't coming up on my.
Yeah, I don't know why it's cutting out here.
I was suggesting that maybe if you tried out on the view mode, maybe just as.
You know, maybe, maybe I can try sharing then. Oh, well, no.
Um, can I ask a question? Is that second slide that you're having trouble showing, is that a more, just the same thing basically as the?
It is. It's what it's going to do, Committee Member Wolfson. It's going to actually plot the perceval wages for each position, and then it's going to depict the employer-paid PERS contributions along with the employee-paid contribution.
Because we could kind of see all four of them on that first. We can just look at that first slide, and then we don't.
Yeah, I want to add that the, the perception that you will get will be significantly different with the second slide. So bear with us.
So Luke, I'm going to go, I'm going to go ahead and share from my screen if that's all right.
Okay, yeah, I don't know why it's, it's not showing up, at least when I go into the presenter view.
Okay, can everybody see this?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So the next one then takes the first position, the battalion chief. These again are just average PERS wages, but then it plots it against the average employer-paid PERS contribution, and then the average employee contribution in green. So the gray bar is the employer-paid PERS contributions, and I don't think it's a surprise, as we know, that it's been, they've been going up. And this, this graph is, is consistent with, with that story, as well as the employee-paid PERS would also, is also going up, up as well.
Yeah, let me make a comment on this one for the benefit of the rest of the committee members. As you can see, basically during this 10-year span that we have, we got a salary of 173 as the salary upon which the PERS is calculated. And then an increase to 200, 2,000, which roughly you think, okay, it's, it's roughly keeping up with inflation plus a little bit more. So the basic salary seemed to us very commensurate, right? With the trends in the market, I guess, and with regard to the inflation impact or the cost of living. But then when you look at the gray bars, that's where you find that that number has to be added on top of that graph. So basically, you may have a 201, 203,000 basic salary, but then you have to add 114,000, 115,000 to that. Would that be correct?
But that, that is, that is correct.
Right. So now, instead of a 202,000, you know, salary, we're looking at, you know, $316,000 total, you know, overall compensation asset cost to the city. And so that trend is really what is driving the significant impact to the city, right? And I, and of course, you do notice that there is a contribution increase, but it's, the increase is not quite commensurate with what the city, is the burden for the city is. And I thought that this type of graphs gives the city council a gauge as to what is it that we want to tackle going forward. Anyway, those are my comments on this.
I can't see all the, all the members on the screen, but I do see a hand from Commissioner, Committee Member Wolfson.
Oh, thank you. You know what I think is a bit odd about this, and I don't know, it seems like the perceval wages only increased like, I don't know, maybe 20%. But the contributions that, at the bottom there are like doubling. But I'm kind of puzzled by, this is where I, you know, this is where I get a little exercised with, with PERS, with CalPERS. You know, but that's all my only comment. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think there's going to be, the, the last graph I show will maybe help explain that. As you see, one of the graph depicts the unfunded actuarial liability. And that'll, I think that's going to be consistent with, with what you see in the, in the, in the gray, gray bar here. So with that, the other slides are, you know, tell a very similar story. Same thing here with the, with the fire captain. These again are average perceval wages. With the, you know, the trending is the same with the employees, employer-paid PERS, as well as the employee-paid PERS.
Yeah, Jason, what I want to highlight here is that you notice that this, this graph begins in the year 2012. So in the other graph, in the other PowerPoint prepared by, by Jason, you will see from 2001, the data that's available from then with regard to the overall city's trend. And keep this in mind, because even though it's increasing, basically we've got roughly almost double the contribution from 2012 to now for a safety employee. But just keep that in mind that to the left of this graph that is invisible, we'll see a larger, a more long-term perception as to what has transpired. Thank you.
Okay, two more to go. We have, and again, this is again a similar, a similar story.
Mr. Bradford, I'm so sorry to interrupt. R. Zakarian, if, I just had some comments about the last two slides. If, if I may add, just a quick calculation, and again, I hope I'm not incorrect. But I just did some quick calculation, and it seems like it's probably over a 10-year span between the battalion chief and between the fire captain. The top blue line as far as the first, average perceval wages has gone up about 10 to 11% over those 10 years. And that's pretty much about 1% per year. So I think that's definitely less than the average raise of the CPI and the inflation that we've seen over the last 10 years. So just to make that, you know, comment or opinion, with all due respect, again, I, I really, I don't, you know, from what I'm seeing, it seems like those numbers are correct. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, Mr. Zakarian, I actually did the, the math. It's about 1.6 to 1.7% a year, depending.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, sir. I appreciate that.
I think there was another hand up from Committee Member Wolfson.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that nobody is misunderstanding what I'm saying here, because I'm not, I'm not going wild about the increase in the perceval wages. But I am astonished that when we have modest increases in perceval wages, that our contributions are doubling. That I find, that's the thing that is troubling to me. So I want to really make sure that everyone understands what I'm saying, because I'm not sure that, I'm not sure it's coming across. Thank you.
If I can just quickly respond to that, I think it, I think you're right, Ms. Wolfson. I thank you for the clarification. The one thing to point out with this particular slide, though, is that it was right around 2013 when Pepper went into effect, and right around 2012 when PERS began to implement a number of different changes in their own investment strategy, which did have an immediate impact. Immediate midterm and to some extent a long term, depending on how far you take this out, on the contributions. So this really, the reason why you're seeing such a large increase in the contributions versus such modest increases in salary is because of the changes that PERS has made in their investment strategy. If we went, took this out even further, actuarially, you actually see that trend come down significantly, but that's just not on here.
Yeah, and if I may add another observation, please take a look at 2017. 2017, we had a 15, 60,000, very close to that, and just a few years later, we are at 88. And I know, I mentioned 2017 because that was the last time that I think we had the city council pay close attention, if I recall, where some of the council members attended several sessions in Pasadena with regard to the, the status. Had we taken action way back in 2017, right, we would have been significantly better off, right, in just these last five years. So just keep that in mind. Look at 2017 or the other graphs as well, and you will see that when we are trying to project into the future, all we have to do is look at this last five years and just look at significant increases in the obligation as a result of CalPERS activities.
We have, we have a lot of hands. I'm going to, Mr. Michaels and.
Very quickly, I did want to ask the employer and the employee contributions, those two bars. Can, is there some analysis that shows what is the contribution for that current year? And contrasting that with what is the contribution based on the unfunded liability that exists?
Let me see if I make sure I understand the question.
Those, we'll take a look at just the gray bars. That is the total contribution by the city to CalPERS.
That's right.
My question is, if we were to do an analysis of each year, is there a way to calculate what the amount required for, say, 2017 was just to put in for 2017? And what is the amount that is going to the unfunded liability that existed in that year?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it is in the CalPERS valuations that these are built on. They separate out what's called normal cost. Normal cost is the essentially the crude cost of the of the year and versus on the what you're the amortized unfunded liability. So these are, these numbers are adding those two numbers together, and they're actually also adding safety and non safety. But but yes, it's absolutely possible to break out the normal cost from the unfunded liability.
Because I believe looking at this, if we are comparing the the personal salary, I'd like to see how that compares to the normal cost. And then the unfunded liability is more of is a separate issue of the management rather than what the contributions are based on.
Yeah.
It would absolutely be possible, and it's often done, to have a different shading on that gray bar. So that the lower part of the gray bar is the normal cost and the upper part is is the unfunded liability. We can do that. It's very easy.
That is correct. The gray bar is both. It is the normal cost and a portion that is the.
That information would be useful to me.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Holson, I just want to add that in one of the other graphs that we have, you will be able to see it in aggregate, not for a particular position, but in aggregate. So in a way, we did have the information.
Sure. We've got a bunch of hands up, and I'd really liked it. Mr. Manning has been very patient.
Something that nobody has been discussing here is that along the way, I'm not sure what year it was, CalPERS has changed its investment, it's investment return assumption by lowering it. And by lowering that assumption, it has caused the contributions to increase. So without taking that into effect, it is very misleading to just look at the gray bar and the blue line and draw conclusions from it.
I think that's a fair point. What we see here with first contributions, as we know, when Pers makes changes to their actuarial contribution, it absolutely has an impact on our employer rates. And that is, that is a function of what you are seeing here.
Mr. Bain and then Mr. Kadikian.
Yeah, I kind of want to mirror what Mr. Manning said and point out that the actuarial assumptions, in particular, the discount rate, the interest rate that's being used there is, well, it may be a very educated guess. It is a guess of long term expected rates of return. And as such, it changes over time. It's not that they have chosen to screw anybody by lowering them. It's just that, you know, 20 years later, the world isn't in the same place it was 20 years ago, and assumptions have changed. Now, some people might say that eight and a half was never realistic. That I can buy into that. But the reality is they are swinging into a more realistic ground. And as a result, the liabilities, the real benefits that have to be paid, which you're actually funding, I mean, realistically, all this is, is put money into a pot, invest it and pay people out. All the assumptions that go into it don't change. The three components, you put money in, you earn some return on it, you pay people out. As you assume the return is going to be higher and you've got a long time to put it in, it changes the amount that you have to fund today. But ultimately, it's the amount you pay people out that determines what the benefits are. And unless you control the amount of benefits people are ultimately going to get, everything else is a little bit of smoke and mirrors of moving a number higher this year to be lower next year. As was pointed out, if you follow these out, some of these start to curve back down because the assumptions have played out. The change in the assumptions have played out, and now you're on a new, more level playing field.
Mr. Kadikian.
I mean, this brings me to the point of the magic of statistics and which set of numbers you want to choose to concentrate on and point out to. It's unfortunate we are in a position where we cannot predict what's it going to cost us. It's all based on assumptions that vary and change that we have absolutely no control on. But if you want to pick a number to say what's it costing us is the bottom figure, what's the city paying every year for the employees, whether it's the personal wage, whether it's the contribution it has to pay. And it's clear from 2012 to 2021, you add the gray bar and the blue dot. We jumped from 180 million, at least for the fire captain, to about 230,000. So, you know, 60, 60,000 in a period of nine years is the increase that happened here. And I know, you know, Mr. Bain is saying what you put in, you put out and invest. But at least I think it's beneficial for the city and the taxpayers to know exactly what we're going to have to put in. Not every year have some variable number pop up and then we have to fund it. And then CalPERS decides to change the discount rate, and then then there's a different number. And then, you know, the life expectancy suddenly increases. Not suddenly, everybody's working towards that goal. Everybody wants to live longer. So yeah, that changes the numbers. So it's really unfortunate we are in this position. And it's unfortunate, everybody wants to pick a set of numbers to go with it to justify their position, saying everything is okay. It's this uncertainty which is the problem. The real problem is the uncertainty that we have here. That's my comments.
Really, we have a huge amount of work to do tonight. We have to go through all the recommendations. So Mr. Macias and then Mr. Milano, I'll let you finish off, and then we need to move on. Mr. Macias.
No, my apologies. Thank you. I'll be real brief. I think just with everyone pointing out, you know, the numbers and the increases in the contributions is the issue with a defined benefits plan. And then these charts that we're showing aren't even taking into account fringe benefits such as healthcare costs and everything else. And then lastly, I just wanted to to mention that earlier, earlier, someone talked about, you know, their rate of pay was, you know, 1% or one and a quarter. But most individuals who worked in a private sector, pay does not increase with inflation. And so that's really just a mute point. And also, most people working in a private sector, their retirement isn't going to be based off of of the amount of earnings that they had. Like someone who's in a pension, like city employees. That's all.
Thanks, Mr. Milano.
Thank you. The the gray bar is indicative of the amount of of funds that the city has to pay for this particular position every year. Naturally, as the discount rate lowers, right? As CalPERS recognizes that it cannot meet its obligation unless the city pays additional, in other words. So obviously, we are paying more, right? Going forward, what I like to convey is that with a higher inflation rate, the payments going out to the retirees are going to be increasing significantly as a result of inflation. That means that CalPERS is going to be dishing out a lot more money. And it is very likely to me that the discount rate will be lowered, raising the additional cost to the current plan. That's, I think I'm correct on that. Anyway, that was my comment with regard to this, and I'm looking forward to the to the more aggregate numbers that will be coming up.
Let's, let's move through these.
Yeah, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm gonna, the next couple of slides, you know, essentially are just two more positions. They tell the, you know, essentially the the same trend. But it will get, we'll get to the, to the final two slides. And this again is just where our annual required contribution is historically since 2001. And it's consistent with a lot of things, with the market returns, with all the actuarial changes that person has made over the years. But this is annual required contribution, condition to our employee cost share that we started back in 2010. Add both of those together, and that's the city's total annual required contribution. The blue line, the city contribution is comprised of the normal cost and the unfunded actuary liability. And I do see a hand from Mr. Malone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bradford. So for anyone accustomed to seeing exponential curves, this should be, this to me is a shocking number. Well, it's not the first time that I've seen it. I've been presenting something similar to this to the city council since, I think, 2006 or so. But what I want to show to everyone is that if you look at 2003, right? Basically have zero contributions in 2003. But then when you, if I were to overlay the actual state of the investments of CalPERS at the time, you will be able to see this amazing reduction in their investments, or in other words, an increase in that liability at the same time when we were not required to pay any money. That's that delay of a year to two years that we have in the reporting has caused us a significant amount of grief because we're, these numbers are presented as if they were today's numbers. But in fact, they're numbers that are lagging, right? So these are lagging indicators. And we make decisions on those lagging indicators when the reality is different. I don't know if I'm making myself clear here. But by starting in the year 2001, and some of the other documents that I submitted, and I hope all of you had an opportunity to read, is where actually show the CAFR of CalPERS demonstrating that they were recognizing significant losses in their investments, right? And at the same time, we're contributing even less, right? Until it begins to catch up with us, and we've been playing catch up ever since. And as we see, the employee additional employee contributions are coming in way back in 2010. In other words, I did, with, I guess, the state of California and many other cities were beginning to recognize just how severe it is. Even though we have increases in the contributions by the employees, it nowhere, you know, captures the significant increases that we have had on a year to year basis going forward. And I hope that this raises questions for most of you, and and this is what I wanted to highlight. These are the graphs that concern me way back from around 2006, when I originally presented information. And of course, you know, we're finally able to, you know, to address it now. Thank you.
There is one more slide. So this is a breakout of our total annual required contribution. And then you can see where the normal cost is versus the unfunded actual liability. And as you can see, the liability UAL is 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 driving this. And again, it's for all those reasons that we mentioned. Market conditions, market returns, changes, all the changes that CalPERS has made in the actuarial assumptions over the years. Now, in one of the, you've had, this committee has had a couple of presentations. If you extended this slide out further, it does peak the next seven to 10 years. And then it does start to go down and sometime, you know, roughly 20 years from now, the UAL is is fully paid off, and you're really dealing with the normal cost.
Now, Mr. Olson. I wanted to point out, may I? I wanted to point out, if you take a look and make an imaginary line at the year 2017, now if you were to raise the bar, raise that line up to meet the blue graph. So back in 2017, if I recall the conversations of the city council back then, was that, you know, it was probably too expensive to buy us ourselves out of CalPERS back then, right? And in hindsight, I said, oh, my God, I would have taken this thing right away, knowing what we know now in hindsight, that would have been a fantastic decision. Or if you were to take it five years before that, that was also another point where we could have exited CalPERS. And you know, at a, at a huge and very significant service to the city going forward. And so this is what we're facing, that we say as of today, right? This is where we are and where we're going to be in another five years. Well, it's very unlikely that it's going to be, you know, that that is going to flatten out in the next five years, given all of the other unknowns, right? The United States gets into a war, a major economic recession. Right now, we are in major inflation. And that is the problem that I want to everyone to understand that when the MOUs are being discussed, I wonder, since we're not able to see, are these international or national effects in consideration to say, what do we do in case inflation wraps up, you know, to 10, 12%, right? As we had back in 1988 or so? What if the, what would, what would be the impact overall when the unemployment rate goes up to six or eight percent? So those things are the, are need to be considered in the MOU, right? Because it has a negative impact on CalPERS investments, which means when we are at the worst of the worst situations, our pension obligation increases. Even if we flatten out everybody's salary, even if we don't hire anybody, it when the worst situations come to us in the world, you know, in in terms of a national or international issue, right? It is when our CalPERS obligation increases even higher. And this is the, what I want to convey to the rest of the members who may may not have a full appreciation of what I'm talking about here. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Holson. I want to also just make a quick comment about this. What I see in these graphs about CalPERS is really shines a big flashlight on the issue of transparency that we heard about during our our sessions. And it concerns me greatly. And I do feel that the lack of transparency about a lot of what they do is a problem. And and I see this acceleration of the of what we're having to pay, it coincides very much with a with a decrease in how open and transparent CalPERS have been. The other thing is, I do want to concur that there are so many uncertainties and rising inflation is a concern right now. Rising interest rates also. You know, I'd like to believe that it's going to turn around the way they're projecting. I really, really want to believe that. I, but I'm concerned about it. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Okay, I think this is the the last slide. Is that right, Jason?
It is.
Okay, so let's do this. I want to move on. Vladimir, you want to call the the minutes item so we can get those approved?
Next on the agenda, approval of minutes, approval of minutes from April 4, 2022 meeting.
Is there a motion? Mr. Manning. Sorry, Mr. Manning.
There is an error that I would like to see corrected, at least one that I caught on page eight, where it says that that I don't, Manning says that he doesn't agree with the idea of complaining to, and it's the SEC. Securities and Exchange Commission.
Sorry about that. We will make that change.
Thank you. And I think I also said the SEC and the or the FBI.
You did, actually, I recall that. SEC or FBI.
Thank you.
Mr. Milano.
I have a couple of areas also on page number eight towards the middle. And I hope that Mr. Michaels was quoted here properly or paraphrased. As Michael states, he's looking at long term solutions. He suggests looking at a defined contribution plan. Oh, that that's correct. And I I corrected myself on this one. But I want to look at page number 10 on my item. This is like one to the fourth paragraph down on page 10. Starting with the second sentence, he says, he highlights how the status quo regarding MOU negotiations has served employees well. I could not locate the the video precisely, but I know my intent in here was to say that the closed door MOU negotiations have benefited employees financially very well. And instead of saying status quo, which is kind of, does not represent the intent of what I wanted to express here, that it is the secrecy process. represent the intent of what I wanted to express here, that it is the secrecy process, right? The closed-door meetings that is allowing for this, for these negotiations, right? To serve the employees who are negotiating with the city serves them well in that regard. It is their financial interest to keep the status quo, or in other words, to keep the closed-door meetings extent. I'd like to have that changed.
So my suggestion, Mr. Milano, on that is the, the minutes are accurate. I, I think you've clarified for the committee what you meant, which is, which is fine and good. But it doesn't seem to me a basis to change the minutes, and they were verbatim. We actually went back and, and, and went through the tape. So I, I don't think that's an appropriate amendment of the minutes, although it's appropriate clarification that you've made down to the committee.
So, so I said status quo as opposed to saying closed-door meetings?
You, yes, yeah. I, I recall you saying it, actually. Yeah. So my suggestion is that with Mr. Manning's amendment on page eight, that we get a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Minutes approved.
Second.
Thank you. Item number two, business items for A, discuss and take tentative vote on potential recommendations to city council.
Vladimir.
Second. Do we, do we?
Yeah, we need a roll call.
Roll call, okay. Let me conduct a roll call. Committee member Amirian?
Yes.
Bain?
Yes.
Kedikian?
Yes.
Manning?
Yes.
Masias?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Milano?
Yes.
Nelson?
Wolfson?
Yes.
Finch?
Yes.
Venz?
Yes.
Lakarian?
Yes.
Alos?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four, business items for A, discuss and take tentative vote on potential recommendations to city council.
Okay, so the moment has arrived. Luke, can you put this on screen? We're going to go item by item in the recommendations. So the, as we sort of previewed last time, the first issue, when we put it up front, as I say intentionally, because obviously we'd be going in a very different direction if we do withdraw from CalPERS or if you recommended we withdraw from CalPERS. So the first issue is the committee's recommendation on, on whether to withdraw from, from CalPERS. And we laid out, again, as we'd said we would, some of the, the pros and cons. We've had a lot of discussion on this item. So I, I, I think it might make sense for somebody to make a motion. And then as to what, what the recommendation would be on this item, yes, no? And then we can debate it. Mr. Manning.
Okay. I would move that the committee strongly recommend against withdrawing from CalPERS.
Is there a second? Debate.
Yes, I'd like to add a couple of comments to that.
Mr. Milano, please proceed.
Yeah. In your option one, section D, you said, however, it seems very unlikely the city would incur an additional 1.8 billion liability. So this, since this is your opinion, can you explain why?
Yes, I'm happy to. So, and, and, and we don't have to, by the way, anybody in going through this, if you want to propose changes in, you know, the language, that's good too. Although none of this is final language. So the argument i- in my mind is this. So it's 600 million, it's actually less right now because we had a good year last year. But we'll call it 600 million to, to, I'm sorry, to, to pay down the entire unfunded liability in CalPERS. So versus, we'll call it one point, I'm sorry, 2.8 billion dollars to, to withdraw entirely. So the, the difference between the 600 million, it's actually bad math on my part, and, and 2.8 is actually 2.2 billion dollars. And so the issue is, you have to ask yourself, how likely, what you're getting out of withdrawing, and significant part is that you will, you will no longer have any risk with respect to CalPERS losing money. And so the question is, you're buying a 2.2 billion dollar insurance policy, in essence. Because other than that, you're paying down the unfunded liability for 600. You're at zero. So the only issue is, how likely is it that CalPERS is going to lose not just another 600 million, not even twice that number, but essentially four times that number? How likely is that? So how valuable is that insurance policy? And so that's, that's, you know, I mean, if you look at it actuarially, the likelihood of that happening is, is extraordinarily small. So you're buying what amounts to, you know, in my mind, if you were to withdraw, a, a very, very expensive insurance policy. So that's my, that's my thinking. Mr. Milano.
Yes, the, you also made a, an additional comment on item one, the section two, that says, once again, the city would have to, would have post-withdrawal costs, creating a new pension for current employees. And then the money in the new funds would also need to be invested. That's assuming that we go with another similar type of plan. If we go with a, with a defined contribution, then we wouldn't have to worry about where the funds are being invested.
Well, my, my legal opinion on that is that you don't have the option for current employees. You would only have the option for brand-new employees. So it would, over time, there would be a benefit, right? Because new employees come in, and those, those would be in a defined contribution plan. But the Cal Supreme Court has made it, you know, very clear that you can't substitute a defined contribution plan for a defined benefit plan for current employees without violating the vesting doctrine. Now, in theory, the Cal Supreme Court could change the vesting doctrine because we know there's a little bit of flux there. But, but based on current law, it, it is extraordinarily unlikely, in the most recent cases, that the Cal Supreme Court would rule that that's okay.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Olson. Yeah, you really get it to the, to the end of your, of your suggested points. The, the recommendation that I was making earlier, that I think that we have potential sufficient grounds for a lawsuit. And of course, that lawsuit, the objective of that will be to reduce that 2.2 billion liability. So we may not necessarily be looking at the 2.2, right? As a, as the exit strategy, it could be significantly less than that. And so I think that what we would need would be a, a study on, you know, what I said likelihood of exiting CalPERS with a number that is much lower than the 2.2 billion. And I think it merits for us to tell the city council that we have these unknowns that are perhaps worthy to pursue. And I think a lawsuit that has the potential of lowering that number by 600 million or 500 million dollars may just put us in a position to be able to make this thing a feasible objective as an alternative. In other words, I don't want to discount it in total. I want to be able to give everyone the, the, in city council, the perception that, you know, we just need to become aggressive to an entity that, in my opinion, made a tortious interference with a decision with regard to accepting that, that 3% at 50 change in two thousand and one. So if we make him liable for that, you know, then it makes the whole process of exiting CalPERS much more realistic.
So perhaps the way of dealing with that, because the lawsuit idea is a controversial idea within, within the committee. So I think my recommendation would be that you propose it as an amendment to this recommendation and put it to a vote on the lawsuit issue. I mean, I, I want to be clear about one thing. The city, only the city attorney, I just, be very clear, where's the city attorney? Here's Mike. Only a city attorney can decide whether the city would actually sue. But you're, you're in a, you're in a position as a body that makes recommendations. You know, you could recommend that, that the city attorney look into the suit or, or whatever. I, I, I have a feeling that that particular finding would be controversial within the committee. And so I, I, I mean, before I would put it in the report, I'd want to know where, where folks were on it. Ms., well, Ms. Wilson, then Mr. Kedikian, and then Mr. Milano. And, oh, and then Mr. Amerian as well, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I, I just, I want to say that I, I would be willing to vote yes on a motion to say that we do not recommend withdrawing from CalPERS. But I would hesitate to editorialize by adding the word strongly in the way that it was presented, because I feel like ultimately it is the council's decision how they want to act on our recommendations, and that in the interests of professionalism and some kind of even-handedness, as well as, I don't know how to put it exactly. I would say it's a kind of, maybe it's my training as a CPA, you know, we're, we're trained to come in without prejudice. So I, 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 I feel that, although I personally am opposed to withdrawing from CalPERS for a number of reasons, I would prefer to strike the word strongly from that motion. Thank you.
Mr. Kedikian.
Yeah, Mr. Olson. I was going to make a recommendation with regards to how we make these motions, first of all. Not to make them in the negative, recommend not to withdraw. If, I mean, there's withdrawal from CalPERS, it's written right there. We can say yes, no, or not, instead of putting negative notations on it, which is going to make it confusing for people to vote on. So that's my first suggestion. Secondly, these are not motions we are taking. This is just a straw poll, if, is my understanding. So I think you're just asking, what do you think? Yes, no? The wording may not be that important at this point. And finally, what are the options? Yes, no, abstain, and abstain with explanation? Is there any other options on how committee members could answer the question?
Well, good point. So these are straw polls because we're not approving the final report. So that, that's right. The, as far as explanations, I think the most valuable thing at this point would be yes, no, with the thought that when we get to the final report, people can write concurrences, et cetera. Because bear in mind, whatever the explanation is, it'll only, it'll be buried in some minutes that, that aren't going to be of, of that much value to the public. So I think it'd be more valuable to the public to have the comments in the final report than they are. And, I mean, basically what you're doing is giving me guidance on how to write the report at this point. That's just my thought. I, I don't know. Mr. Garcia, I, I, I feel like I could use your help here, just on parliamentary side here a little bit about how to approach this.
It's really up to the committee. I think your, your approach is correct. When you asked for motion, it's on the floor. It's been seconded. If someone wants to make amendments to it, they can. Otherwise, we should have a debate on it, and somebody can make a motion to amend the mo, amend the, the primary motion or just move forward with it. I mean, another option is that, you know, as things are raised, you can ask Mr. Manning whether he's willing to accept any of the proposed amendments as friendly amendments. So we'd have to go through a motion and, and a motion amendment process for every suggestion? That's another option if you want to, if you want to do that.
Well, I, I, I think most of these things are, are not necessarily things that we would have to have as, as separate motions. But, but, but this particular thing, whether we file a lawsuit or not, strikes me as, as, as a fairly major item if that's going to be a recommendation. It's basically a recommendation unto itself in a lot of ways.
I agree. And it could be like you, like you mentioned, a, a motion to for our office to research the viability of a lawsuit and present our findings to the council. Because there are, there are, you know, there are numerous issues of proof with liability and remedy that, that we would have to look at before we could, that really should be incorporated as, as a recommendation.
Luke also points out to me, and I had forgotten this, that the issue does come up later in the, in the outline. Luke, can you just point out where that is, please? There we go. So there's a, there's a specific recommendation on this. People can vote up and down. So we don't need an amendment at this time.
Well, Mr. Olson, the,
Yes.
The, the lawsuit is integral to the consideration as to whether to remove ourselves from CalPERS. Because it is part of the recommendation that I would want the city council to see. But if this is viable, you know, let's say we have a 40% chance that this actually could, could go through. And if, and if we have an opportunity to lower our obligation by 500 million dollars, right? That would be a significant way of justifying the move out of CalPERS. So by having it separate, it doesn't, it doesn't make this recommendation part of the context of what we're discussing. I'm saying, make this part of the context as to whether or not to exit CalPERS. Because that's the way, that's the approach that I would have taken. You know, start with a lawsuit and then figure it out how we can exit CalPERS, you know?
So my suggestion, if that's your view, is that you make an amendment, you propose an amendment as to this, saying that contingent upon the results of the city attorney's research, if, if, if the lawsuit is viable, then withdrawal would be, would be possible and see how that flies. That's my suggestion. Mr. Michaels?
My question was one more of timing. My comments were looking 25, 30 years down the road of looking to change to a defined contribution plan or the retirement. So at that point, I would be looking at if we put, if Mr. Manning would consider a friendly amendment to his motion for putting a timeframe to say withdrawal in the short term from CalPERS is something that we do not recommend. And then explore other options, which may include the lawsuit or other options that are talked about later on.
Excuse me. In response, in response to that, what I would say is, the wording that, that I, that sounds good to me would, not, not in terms of short term or long term, but to say perhaps that we recommend against withdrawal from CalPERS at this time.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that language, and I wanted to just put language in that defined a timeframe. And that may allow us to explore other options.
Can we have the rewarding of the, of the motion? Can you rephrase it, please? Or repeat it?
Okay, I can, I, I'm comfortable taking out the word strongly. The motion is that the committee recommends against exiting CalPERS at this time.
So I vote yes means that we recommend not to exit. Avoiding the affirmative means that we don't want to exit.
Correct.
Now, is this a motion? Do we need a second? I mean, how is this, what's the deal?
We had a second on the motion, I recall.
Well, then you would need, whoever seconded would need to concur with the changes we just made.
Who seconded it?
I, I would like to propose a different motion.
Uh, hang on, let's, uh, let's just figure out who seconded it first. Vladimir, do you, how did you record a second?
It was Mr. Amerian.
Mr. Hello, Mr. Amerian, are the, are the changes acceptable to you, to the motion?
Yeah, I, I would be, I would be open to that. I did have a couple of comments. I think, you know, I think Mr. Manning, in the interest of building a consensus, is willing to remove the word strongly. However, you know, there's a lot of comments here that aren't considering what the secondary and tertiary effects and impacts of those types of decisions are. You know, it's, you know, finding, finding that money is not going to be something where we just, you know, as a city, just print, you know, 2.8 billion dollars. That's going to require either selling assets or pulling bonds. So there are, there are impacts to the city by simply even considering what it means to come up with 10 to 15 times what the general fund, annual general fund of the city is in a bond payment. Furthermore, this idea of a lawsuit and exploring a lawsuit, I mean, if the committee so chooses to recommend that the city, the city I mean, if the committee so chooses to recommend that the city count, uh, the city attorney's office take time to explore that, that's fine. But most contracts in general have many clauses um, regarding what happens when lawsuits are filed and what happens when, you know, a certain party prevails. And the reality of the situation is you're dealing with an entity that has, you know, half a trillion dollars or so, um, you know, in funds plus, you know, if even a per, 1% of that is what their actual operating budget is, that means they have entire office buildings full of attorneys. Um, you know, who are going to be, you know, fighting this tooth and nail because they don't wanna create a precedent. And so the, the likelihood of the city of Glendale um, and the attorney's office deciding that um, with our uh, you know, limited bandwidth, we're either going to, you know, internally or externally hire a firm in order to sue one of the largest uh, you know, funds in the world. Um, it's just, it's just completely unlikely and, and I think it's, it's not something that should be considered in this. So I'm willing to second uh, Mr. Manning's amendment in the interest of moving on. And that would be the motion, uh, that the motion being, you know, uh, that the committee recommends against leaving Calpers, exiting Calpers at this time. I'd be willing to uh, second that. But uh, you know, any further amendments, um, I think uh, you know, to that, uh, any watering down of that, I, I don't think I would support in any way, shape or form. Thank you.
Mr. Milano, are you going to make a motion uh, for an amendment on this or?
Yes, yes, I am. And my, my amendment, and I, and actually I consider it a, if, you know, and it will, it would, it would read something along the lines that um, an exit on Calpers uh, contingent upon the investigation of a potential lawsuit that may benefit the, the city in lowering the exit strategy. Does that sound reasonable? Does that sound clear?
So I'm not, I'm not actually completely clear on it. Um, the um, I, I think that you are suggesting that something like that you're, you're in agreement that we shouldn't exit Calpers unless the city could, city attorney
Consider.
That, that we could be successful in a lawsuit that reduces liability.
Yes, that, that phrases it pretty well.
Okay. Uh, did everybody think that was clear enough?
Can I just ask, so I just wanna make sure it's clear, so that the city wouldn't, the recognition would be that the city not exit, uh, exit Calpers if our office concludes that there's a viable strategy to pursue litigation against Calpers?
There we go.
That, that's right. It's, it's unless you, you conclude that, right? Because, right, exactly. Um, so um, so let's uh, is there a second for that, that, that amendment?
Wait, wait, Mr. Holtzman. E- e- even that amendment is just, it, it's so speculative in the sense that, you know, so if the attorney, if the city attorney's office determines that there is some possibility of a lawsuit, then this amendment has the kind of unspoken part of that we would then recommend exiting Calpers. You know, there's no idea of what the success of the lawsuit is, what it's going to take to actually uh, undergo the lawsuit. So I, I mean, that's fine if Mr. Milano wants that as his amendment. You know, I'm happy to vote no on that and uh, and we can move on. I'm just letting you know that that's not a clear, you know, amendment that, you know, will, will, will be a very good recommendation to city council in any way, shape or form from this committee.
I'm actually waiting for a second before the debate here, and I haven't heard a second yet. Uh, Mr. Kadekian, is that a second?
No, no, there, there's no second, and I'm not hearing a second. I was gonna propose another one, a different one.
Okay, go for it.
I was gonna propose what Mr. Manning says, said, but add at the end of the sentence, but continue to explore feasibility in the future to exit Calpers. Mr. Manning's uh, motion was to recommend against exiting Calpers at this time. I would add to it, but continue to explore feasibility in the future to exit Calpers.
All right, is there a second for Mr. Kadekian's motion?
I second it.
Are you treating, Mr. Holtzman, are you treating that as an amendment to Mr. Manning's motion or as a substitute motion?
No, I think that's a uh, an amendment. I think it's an amendment to the motion. It's
That's how I heard it too. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor now?
We have an amendment on second. And the amendment, uh, uh, yes, there is a second, uh, for Mr. Milano. Uh, the amendment is essentially the exact same language that is on the floor plus the words, uh, but continue to explore uh, exiting Calpers in future time. I'm not sure I got the words exactly right, but that's
But continue to explore feasibility in the future to exit Calpers. In other, in other words, exiting Calpers should not be off the table for whatever reason.
It's just not part of the committee's recommendation. It wouldn't be part of the committee's recommendation this time, but we would continue to look at it.
Exactly.
Are we, are, are we debating the proposed amendment now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, I would just like to, to state, i- in my opinion, if we put such open-ended uh, a call to action in the future, that's not only beyond what I think this committee is called to do, but it doesn't specifically state how that is supposed to happen. Uh, I don't think that it is uh, that, that we need to uh, recommend that because as circumstances may change, uh, then anything can be explored again in the future. I think that really we should limit our recommendations to a plan going forward and we can't take all uh, permutations of what could happen in the future into account. Um, I, I, I think that it would be problematic to include language like this. That's just my opinion.
Um, I, to answer you, Mr. Manning, my concern is exactly yours, but flip the other way around. If the committee at this point recommends against exiting Calpers, 10 years down the road, ex- Calpers makes it impossible for us to meet our obligation. They're gonna turn back and says 10 years ago, the committee looked at Calpers and recommended exiting, not exiting it completely. So I think we should always have the option available. God knows what Calpers controls on us 10 years later. I don't want them coming back and saying, this committee looked at it and said no from day one.
Uh, Mr. Kadekian, I would, I would just remind you though, it does say at this time and Mr. Manning accepted that amendment. So it does say at this time. Just, I mean, it, I'm not weighing in on this debate, but just to be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, R is occurring here. I actually echo what Mr. Manning said and what uh, members um, uh, Amerian also said is uh, at this time, kinda paints a good basic picture of at this time, leaving the door open for any future um, pension review committees that may come up again. Um, so I do echo Mr. Manning and Mr. Amerian's recommendation of leaving it to at this time.
Ms. Wilson?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Holtzman. I, I wanna say, you know, just in the interest of time, we do have to get through this. Um, it's my hope that when we see the draft of, of the report and the recommendations to council, that probably in the um, in the fine details, you know, there'll be sufficient um, description of reasoning for the committee's recommendations, but also um, you know, clear description of what potentially could change in the future to change potential actions that the city might wanna take at that time. So I, I don't want to um, you know, I don't wanna talk, I don't wanna pontificate now and, and cause us to go longer, even though we're already going. Um, but I just wanna maybe put in a plea that we not um, maybe get too lost in the weeds on some of this. Because I think that when, when it comes time to look at the report, there'll be ample things, I'm sure. We'll have lots and lots of comments and that might be a better time for us to get into this much detailed debate about how we're spinning, what we're recommending at this time and what we're not recommending. And that was another reason why I wanted to back off on the word strongly because I feel like all we should be doing right now is trying to arrive at some kind of consensus about basic recommendations that we're making. Thank you.
That, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I can't imagine the committee det- uh, debating the fine details of the report, however. That'll never happen.
Don't, don't count out this Virgo.
Mr. Michaels?
Just to, I do understand Mr. Kadekian's point and I agree with Ms. Wolfson. I support through the recommend, through the motion as Mr. Manning has made it. The fact that we have the report that would continue on, it is obvious that we would have other recommendations. I want us to try and treat this and other issues as a straw poll or an opinion poll so that we can move through this and not try and create exhaustive motions, but just go through as a direction. And I'm comfortable with, at this point, saying we should not, we're not recommending remove it, withdrawing from Calpers at this time. And then we have other recommendations that are addressed further on. And I'm hoping that we can continue with the rest of the recommendations as a straw poll and treat them individually without trying to tie everything together.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels, and I, I agree with what you and Ms. Wilson said. I mean, bear in mind, I'm gonna write things. You're gonna have, you are gonna have plenty of thoughts about whether it's too strong, not strong enough. And, and really now, I'm just trying to get the material I need to, to, to begin to write them, you know, the report. We're actually, in fairness, we're writing the, the front part right now. Um, I would like somebody to call the question so we can maybe move on.
Yes, Mr. Holtzman, I will, uh, I will call the question.
Point of order. You know, Mr. Holtzman, you're basically, again, using your authority to guide the proceedings, right? I want someone to call the question. Um, and there are certain comments that I wanted to add to this point. Of course, we've got none of the
Mr. Milano, I was, to be clear, just, just, just so that, uh, you know, just to be clear, uh, Mr. Holtzman, I was going to call the question before you even suggested it. So I, I move to close debate.
Open, I'm hoping we don't have to, because it is a straw poll, we don't have to go with all the trimmings, but if we have to. Uh, Mr. Milano, if you, if you wanna make like another one minute's worth of comments, it's fine, but then, then we really need to get a vote.
Yeah, just, thank you. Just as a procedural, a point, hey, hey, somebody calling the question does need a second. All right, so let me continue. Everything that we're dealing with has to do with probabilities, right? Therefore, the, the charge that we had to have certainty in order to be able to move forward, uh, in order to accept it as it is, I don't consider that a valid logical statement. Everything that we're gonna be doing during this, this recommendations going forward are our best estimates on the probability of something occurring. Had this decision been made in 2017 to say, do we recommend exiting Calpers or not? Obviously
Mr. Holtzman, point of order. Mr. Holtzman, point of order. I believe I heard somebody second.
Yeah, I did hear a second as well. Um, uh, listen, I, I really think we, we've, we've, we've said enough on this, Mr. Milano. Let, let, let's get a vote on it. It is just a straw poll. Uh, but Vladimir, I'd still like you to, to conduct it and do a, do a, a roll call.
Committee member Amidian?
Just to be clear, are we voting on the motion to call the question or are we voting on the motion?
Um, I thought we were voting on the motion. I, I, I mean, I understand, Mike, I mean, I realize that technically we should vote on the
Yeah, if, if there's an objection to calling the question, then you have to, you have to take a look.
So, Mr. Milano, do you object to calling the question?
Yes, I object.
Okay, then on the, on the uh, uh, motion to call the question.
This is the motion to end, to stop the debate on, on, on the amendment.
Yes.
Committee member Amidian?
Yes.
Committee member Bain?
Yes.
Committee member Kadekian?
No.
Committee member Manning?
Yes.
Committee member Masias?
Yes.
Committee member Michaels?
Yes.
Committee member Milano?
No.
Committee member Nelson? Committee member Wolfson?
Yes.
Committee member Finch?
Yes.
Committee member Vance?
Yes.
Committee members Zaccarian?
Yes.
Committee member Paulus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
What was the vote?
So now it's a vote on the amendment itself. Uh, and the amendment, to be clear, was to add uh, um, uh, language that says uh, um, but to continue, uh, some, I'm sorry, I got slightly wrong, to explore the feasibility in the future of exiting Calpers. That's not exactly right.
Mr. Holtzman, just, ju- just to make sure that we don't get letters to the city council after this meeting, uh, can, can Vladimir uh, let us know what, what the eyes and the nose were so that we're sure that we had two-thirds vote in order to call the question?
We had only two. Mr. Kadekian and Mr. Milano.
What were the yes votes?
With all due respect, I think this is a waste of time. Can we just get a clear statement of the, what it is we're voting on and just vote? Thank you.
Let's, I mean, it's important, Ms. Wilson, cuz the issue's been raised uh, and will likely be raised.
It was clear, it was clearly the, the yeses prevailed. There's no need for this.
10, 10 yeses and 2 nos.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure. On the proposed amendment, uh, which was to add to the, uh, Mr. Manning's motion was to recommend against exiting Calpers at this time. The amendment, which is what we're gonna vote on next, is but to continue to explore the feasibility in the future of exiting uh, I'm sorry, this is uh, Mr. Kadekian's motion of uh, exiting Ca- uh, Calpers. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, uh, so on that uh, proposed amendment, uh, uh, yes would be to add that, that language. No would be uh, to go, well, we have, we have to decide, then ultimately vote on Mr. Manning's motion. But on the amendment, Vladimir, can you call the roll?
Committee member Amidian?
No.
Committee member Bain?
No.
Committee member Kadekian?
Yes.
Committee member Manning?
No.
Committee member Masias?
No.
Committee member Michaels?
No.
Committee member Nelson? Committee member Milano?
Yes.
Committee member Finch?
Did you say Finch?
Committee member Finch?
No.
Committee member Wolfson?
Yes.
Committee member Vance?
No.
Committee members Zaccarian?
No.
Committee member Paulus?
No.
Uh, we have three yeses and nine nos. Motion failed.
The amendment fails. So now on uh, the original motion. And the original motion to repeat is to recommend against exiting Calpers at this time. Mr. Manning, is that correct?
Yes.
Committee member Amidian?
Yes.
Committee member Bain?
Yes.
Committee member Kadekian?
No.
Committee member Manning?
Yes.
Committee member Masias?
No.
Committee member Michaels?
Yes.
Committee member Milano?
No.
Committee member Nelson? Committee member Nelson? Committee member Wolfson? Ms. Wilson? Committee member Wolfson?
Are you muted?
Yes.
Committee member Finch?
Yes.
Committee member Vance?
Yes.
Committee members Zakarian?
Yes.
Committee member Paulus?
Yes.
We have three nos and nine yeses.
Okay, let's move on to item two. You know, if people want to take a five-minute break because this is going to be a long meeting, you know, we could certainly do that. If that's the committee's preference, is there a desire to do that or is, are people okay?
I prefer going straight through.
No, I'd appreciate a five-minute meeting, especially since it appears that this meeting is going to go quite a bit longer than scheduled.
Okay, let's do this. Let's make it really five minutes. I could use a break, so I'll make it my own motion.
Okay, we're taking a recess.
Okay, and Luke, if you would put the the outline back on the screen.
Okay. We got
I just texted GTV6, we're going live shortly. We're on. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to recommendation two. Luke, this is from, I always forget this witness's name.
Marcia Fritz.
Fritz, there you go, right. For some reason, so so we're open for comments. I did make a change. You'll see it's in blue on, on item sub A4. I talked to Bartel and Associates and they did not believe that delaying normal retirement would come anywhere close to cutting the pension in half, but did agree that, that delaying normal retirements would say, would reduce cost. So I changed that just because there was a factual question about its accuracy.
I don't think that we should include any of these items in our report. Number three, avoid programs that encourage early retirement such as drop. Well, I think the city already does that. So I think to put something like that in the report would be confusing. It would make it sound like the city doesn't do that. And the, the other items that Ms. Fritz mentioned, I don't really think are well-taken. I mean, first of all, I don't think that we, well, it's hard to delay. You can, I mean, the city doesn't decide when people retire. So to say that we should delay normal retirement by five years, well, that's really up to every individual member. I mean, we can encourage that, but I'm not really sure that that's the sort of recommendations that the city is looking for from us. And the, the other items seem more personnel-focused than they are really items for our consideration for recommendations. That's just my thinking on this and others might disagree.
Mr. Holtzman, I tend to agree with Mr. Manning. And I'd be open to a motion that is general in the sense that it says the city should continue to explore, you know, options that limit pension costs. Because that rightly suggests that the city has and continues to do so anyway. And then in the details, some of, you know, the options can be argued, you know, in terms of, you know, what types of options we should include in the report or highlight in the report. So my motion would be to have a general statement saying that the city should continue to explore options that limit pension liabilities, increased pension liabilities.
Mr. Zakarian? Oh, wait a minute, is there a second? I'm sorry, on your motion.
I was going to second it.
Mr. Zakarian?
Yeah, I actually agree with Mr. Manning and Mr. Amerian as well, exploring options that limit pension costs. And the only reason behind that is the city does not have a drop program for any of the employees right now. A five-years delay in normal retirement, like Mr. Manning said, is really not up to the city, but up to the employee itself. And just in my perspective, again, skewed view, but I think it creates more risk that the city would be liable for as it relates to the, the labor groups as far as police and fire. So yeah, no, that's, that's fine. I actually agree with Mr. Amerian. I second that as well.
Mr. Amerian, if I could just, I'm not sure I wrote this down exactly right. Continue to explore options that was, it's reduced pension costs? Was that?
Limit?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm trying to take into account stating these negatively, but you know, obviously, this, this section is about limiting increases in pension liabilities. So, you know, the language should probably be that the city should continue to explore options, maybe explore and implement options that limit increases in pension liabilities.
Afraid acceptable to the second, or?
Well, do we have comments on it?
Second.
I do not want to disagree with what he said in the first place.
Yeah, okay, yes, now it's time for comments.
Thank you. I think Mr. Manning had it right from the very beginning. You know, it is, if you look at the data and actually looked at the data of retirees, especially for the ones who are in the classic plan, very few people are extending. It's only, I think I only found one employee who actually extended in any, in any significant way, like more than five years. So it's a non-issue with regard to Mr. Amerian's suggestion. Well, that's what we're here to do. I mean, if we just simply say, oh, continue to explore it, then what was the role of the committee in the first place? So I suggest, let's go with the suggestion of Mr. Manning. This does not merit our vote.
Mr. Kadikian?
The motion that is being debated at this point, is it eliminating the suggestions that are in here that are going to go in the report? In other words, some of the items in, in two, A, B, and C are going to be eliminated? I mean, I'm trying to understand the motion. Limit unnecessary increase in pension cost. It's just a broad motion that is being made. Is any of that eliminating the suggestions that are listed here?
My understanding is that both, well, first of all, I think the motion is, is what I just described, but, but that both Mr. Manning and, well, actually, Mr. Zakarian, I'm sorry, Mr. Amerian, or in both cases, you'd be eliminating all the language. Other than, I mean, in Mr. Amerian's case, you're, you're having that one sentence about continuing to explore reduction. I don't know, it sounded like Mr. Manning was suggesting, but that's not what the motion is, eliminating the language altogether. Mike, how do you suggest we, we skin this cat for purposes of debating in motions? You're muted.
Apologies. I think I would ask the maker of the motion for clarification on its intent. Is that, I mean, that, that was the question, right? What is the, what is the intent here?
So the motion is, I'm sorry, I'm now lost a little bit. Was this Mr.?
I made the motion.
Yeah, I thought so too.
The intent, the intent of the motion is to draw attention to the fact that, number one, the city is already actively doing it. So the word continue makes it clear that the city is already exploring options that actively limit increases in pension liabilities. And I do agree with Mr. Manning that the suggestions that are in this section are not something that are well-taken with the rest of the committee, based upon what I've heard during the committee discussions. And I think that that will be borne out once we have the report written and, you know, we're able to talk about in detail whether, you know, any of these, if they're even mentioned in the report, have any type of, you know, support from the committee as a potential option. You know, again, the, the report, as I understand it, Mr. Holtzman, is going to include in some way, shape, or form, kind of the entire universe of, of what, you know, options are in terms of pensions. And then there's going to be a very clear understanding of what the committee supports as recommendations to the city council. And so as a recommendation to the city council, I think it's important that the committee recognize that the city has already taken many steps to limit increase, increases in, in pension costs. And I think that's an important statement to make in, in the general. But these specific, you know, recommendations that are mentioned here, don't have, I think, the support of the committee in general.
May I make a very, very short comment, which is that I think that we can make clear in our, in the introduction to our report, where, how we got to where we are, where we are, and then what the city has done to mitigate. I don't think that that really needs to be part of the report if it's not really a recommendation.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Manning, you know, in the sense that this sounds less like a recommendation and more like something we would weave into, you know, again, there's going to be a whole front of the report we're not talking about. And this is sort of the, the formal recommendation. So I, I would suggest that I take the intent of Mr. Amerian's comments and I will weave them into the introduction, introductory portions of the report. And then that you, to be consistent with what you're proposing, that we delete, we said not include this entire section in, in the recommendation section. I think that's probably the best way to harmonize these things, but let's see where everybody else goes. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I wasn't sure whether I raised my hand before anybody else. I just wanted to say I agree with, with the direction we're taking in this regard. And just in the interest of time, again, I think I sent some materials where I had sort of proposed kind of a structure where I showed all the presentations listed, the dates we had them. And I, I kind of envisioned that as a sort of a structure, an underpinning skeletal structure where, where there's going to be disclosure in the report of what our speakers suggested or brought to our attention. And then we come in with our recommendations, what we thought about that. And that's, that's why, you know, for us to be debating so extensively each of these items, I'm not sure it's a great use of our time tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Milano, I think you had your hand up as well. And then Mr. Kadikian?
Yeah, with regard to line the first item on this, the employee practices having to do with actively scrutinized disability retirement claims. We had a presentation that touched upon this, but I don't recall any data being given to us supporting the claim that Mr. Amerian is saying that the city is already doing this. And so let's be careful. And so let's be careful that when we, uh, were making the claim that the city is doing that, that it was actually presented as part of the evidence, rather than just some conjecture that somebody mentions up because of their personal experience. So my data shows me differently. I actually looked at the data of people of police and fire retiring with disability. It's close to 50%. So, um, so let's not make statements that haven't been presented, uh, especially statements of fact that haven't been presented to the committee. Uh, that's all I want to go, I want to add going forward.
Sure, and let me just say, uh, you know, on the issue of, of, of disability retirements in police and fire, uh, they are, uh, almost across the state, you know, shockingly high. So I, 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 I'm certainly not going to make a statement that, that there is, you know, that there aren't a lot of disability retirements. But a, as you know, it's a, it's a very challenging issue, uh, in terms of preventing that. Uh, Mr. Kadikian.
So if I'm understanding, our recommendation is just going to be a general recommendation? And all the time and effort we put, understanding all these different issues, we shouldn't bring them up to the attention of city council that those are options are available? Am I missing something here?
I, the proposal is with respect to item two, which is just these specific practices, all of which came from one presentation, I should add, uh, that, that it not be included in the recommendations. Mr. Pink.
May I say something?
I think that the point on this isn't to not include it, it's not to, um, say that the city isn't already trying to minimize disability retirement. It's just to say they should continue to work at minimizing disability retirement that causes increased pension costs, just as a general statement.
I just want to clarify, you know, I think I just said we're gonna include the content that was presented to us, I believe, in the report. Um, the only thing that we're voting on right now is do we, uh, recommend this as something new? And, and also I just want to say, I think there, there was more that she talked about than just disability, although that does stand out, of course, because it's listed at the top. But there's the question of whether you need to have sworn officers for every sort of position that's needed, that type of thing. And, and I think there's certainly room for the city to continue exploring these options. I do think the city has, uh, explored them to some extent in the past. Have they been successful? Maybe not so much, I don't know, you know, I, I'm not sure they've been successful at implementing, but, but that's okay. Uh, you know, we're, we're still going to recommend that they continue that. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, can you take over for just, uh, 10 minutes? I've just, I unfortunately have to do something real quick, so if you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Garcia, I just had a comment to make, if that's okay. Uh, Ms. Wilson, I know this is going to be in the report, but it's useless. It's all the way down in some sort of a footnote that nobody's going to see it. And I didn't realize the city was so sensitive that, uh, you know, if they're doing something and we say, do this, because we didn't put the word continue in front of it, they're going to be all worked up. But if that solves the problem, let's put a continue in front of each one of these items. I'm okay with that. But to just eliminate those as if those are things that shouldn't be considered, or if because they have been considered, shouldn't be continued to be considered, is meaningless and pointless to me.
Hi, Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I concur, um, with Mr. Kadikian. The, um, that particular point, uh, the first initial point concerning the city's action, it doesn't really matter what the city has been doing before, or is not doing, or to what extent they're doing. We are saying, you know, this merits their attention to go forward. So if this is, so now I don't even know what we're voting on. We're voting on Mr. Manning's, uh, I guess, initial suggestion of an amendment of, of a motion? Because if it is, I want to amend and ask Mr. Kadikian what stated.
This is not my motion.
Yeah, correct, that's Mr. Amerian's motion. And it was, again, it was to, uh, that the city should continue to explore options that limit, uh, its increases in pension liability. And it was, uh, as I think Mr. Amerian's already stated, it recognition that, uh, this continue, the city continues to explore options at all times. Um, and, and I think as noted by the maker of the motion, it was his sense that the, uh, the items in the, that are listed here are, are not necessarily things that we're doing or have been doing in terms of, we weren't, for example, we're not, we're not in drop, so why would you put something in the statement to not start to enter into drop? That's, that sort of thing. So, uh, if there are, are there other, uh, individuals who wish to speak on the motion? Um, who haven't, and I'm sorry, I don't have, and I'm not privy to the, since I'm not moderating the meeting, I can't see who, who is questioning unless they're in my layout.
It, it, it looks like Mr. Um, Michaels has had his hand up for a while.
Mr. Garcia, I'd just like a clarification. Mr. Holtzman said that he was going to make these points in the preamble. So I'm just looking for a clarification in the recommendation that Mr. Amerian's motion is going to remove this as a section of the report, and these topics would be addressed in the preamble as a clarification.
I believe it'll be a discussion as, as Ms. Holtzman mentioned, of the things that were looked at, that the city's currently doing, and what this committee looked at in terms of options. And then an actual section of the report will not include these things. That's correct.
Then I just wanted to make sure that the committee is aware these issues will be part of the report in some fashion as the preamble, but we are actually discussing removing this as a section of the formal report.
Yeah, yes, and, and, and look, uh, you know, before, before, uh, quite frankly, before, uh, you know, my statements were straw man and, uh, and, you know, the, the, the idea here, and we can just ask, the city's present here, we can ask the city what, you know, if any of these options, what things they have done in order to limit the increase in pension liabilities? Mr. Takhtayan, would you like to briefly, um, you know, uh, comment to the committee of what things the city has done to limit increases in pension liability as far as, you know, employment is concerned? Or Mr. Bradford? I mean, I know I've heard, heard many things, but I, I, I guess it's unclear and people want to focus on the word continue.
I mean, if it would be helpful, if it would be helpful to look at the list of things that are on this document to say, have we done this or have we done that? We can go down that list, uh, but that's a pretty open-ended question. In terms of things like limiting our liability for workers' comp, there's a number of programs that we have in place, uh, to limit workplace injuries, uh, thereby limiting our disability claims during retirement. As we already talked about though, a lot of these, uh, injuries that, uh, do come up are presumptive in nature and under California law, US cities really have absolutely no, uh, defense to them. It's really comes, it comes down to a calculation of what that injury costs. I mean, it's almost as, 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 as simple as that. Um, we have, uh, I mean, do you, do you, do you just want to go down the list of a whole bunch of things? Or how do you guys want to do this?
I, I have a suggestion. I, you know, if there is one thing to say, what has been done or what program has been put in place, is a completely different thing as to what has worked effectively to reach the objectives that you wanted. Anybody can come up with a program, whether the program is going to be successful or not, that's what matters. If the outcome is that there has been no change in, uh, in this type of disability retirements for the last 15 years, then whatever the city is doing is then ineffective, no matter that they have a program in place. And since we don't have the data, at least I have some of the data, but the rest of the committee does not, then I think that as a, as a plan to include it more specifically says, yes, we like the idea of having this disability patients be looked at, um, more, um, into a, into an effective program, something along those lines, as opposed to just simply washing over it. What my contention right is becoming is that I am beginning to get the feeling that with the very large numbers of our committee members being vested in the outcomes of this, and the fire department is one of the departments in the city that I, to my opinion, abuses this to a great degree, and the police department as well. So why would it be in their interest to say, keep this, right? Encourage the city to continue the process? The, um, so that's, this is, this whole process is starting to be amazingly, um, skewed, and, and it's not taking into account these specific items that we suggest for the city to basically have productive or positive results.
Mr. Milano, as, as a representative of the city, I will be the first to tell you that you are not going to get any opposition from my office to make a recommendation as part of the committee to urge council and the administration to continue looking at areas where there, there may be some potential for improvement. Um, I don't want this to come across as the city of Glendale being defensive, uh, about that particular topic. Are there things we do? Yes. Are there limits to what we're able to do? Yes, there absolutely are, completely out of our control. Does that mean that we're just going to close our eyes to it? Absolutely not. If there's opportunities for improvement, we will. So if that is the recommendation of this committee, let's move forward.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Takhtayan.
I, I think the items itemized here are exactly what they say what you want to do, John. So we're, I mean, just, I'm, I'm okay with just leaving this the way it is. If the city is doing it wonderful and, you know, cheers to everybody, but I don't understand why we have to eliminate and not even mention those so that nobody even knows about these. I, I'm not understanding that.
Hey, everyone, R is a current here. Um, I'm not going to make a lot of comments on it, only because it comes from a different lens. And, uh, but however, I do want to state that using such language of it being, excuse me, sorry about that, give me one second. Sorry, the station's got a call. But to use language such as it being abused by the police and the fire groups, I just don't think is appropriate language. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear.
And on behalf of the administration, I'll just go ahead and echo, uh, a little bit further on what Mr. Zakarian said. You do see a lot more injuries in certain fields because that is what those fields are prone to. Um, you're likely not going to see a typical back injury from me the way that you might from somebody who, who pours and, and smooth cement all day. Um, so yes, uh, th- there are intricacies in the different operations, and I didn't want to oversimplify that.
I, I, I concur. They're placing the idea that there are many positions that are subject to, to injury. Uh, but our own ex-police chief, who basically claimed that he injured his back, he said it in public, injured his back by moving a file cabinet, and then retired with disability, something that I remember as clearly as, let's see, that it happened yesterday. And so, and that's why we come from different areas of emphasis. But I fully agree with Mr. Takhtayan, there are many jobs within the city, especially those in GWP, those individuals who are basically lifting, doing heavy workload, or having to confront violent individuals. Absolutely, I fully agree with that. The, um, but it is where there is the perception, right? That there may be a problem that needs additional energy and focus. I'm all favor, I'm in favor of that.
So we have a motion on the floor still, uh, unless, unless I missed it while I was out, out, out.
Still on the floor.
Kidding, uh, which would have been okay, by the way. Uh, so, uh, do we, do we, do we think it's time to take a vote on that motion?
And, and, you know, I would like, I, I do, I would like to say one more thing, you know, uh, and Mr. Zakarian is not going to say it himself, but, um, as the chair of the audit committee, I know for a fact, notwithstanding Mr. Milano's claims regarding the ex-police chief, um, and, and whatever lack of good faith there is, I know personally that Mr. Zakarian and other firefighters and other police officers have been injured in the line of duty, actually doing their job, saving people's lives. Um, and the contention that it's being widely abused is, is just, uh, really, really unconscionable, quite frankly. But yes, let's, let's call this question as well.
Is there any objection to calling the question?
Uh, what is the question? Please remind us.
The, the motion on the floor is, uh, that, uh, that the city should continue, that we would say something under the order that should, the city should continue to explore and implement, um, options that limit increases in pension liability. And obviously this would be accompanied by, it wouldn't be completely out of body. I'd have to write a piece that goes into it.
Mr. Holtzman, now that you've returned, my question is, you had mentioned you would put this information in the preamble. I don't support hiding or burying any information that this committee discussed. As far as presenting it, that is up to the committee. So if you are going to make these recommendations available as part of the preamble, I'm comfortable saying that the city should continue to follow practices that limit costs such as this, but I do want to make sure that that information is reflected somewhere in the report and not simply removed.
Uh, well, if, again, if this is voted on as a recommendation, I would actually probably put it in the recommendation section. Uh, I was actually suggesting an alternative was to move it up into, you know, uh, an earlier part, but it, it appears at this point that I think we're voting on it as a recommendation, so that's where it would appear. Um, can we, uh, um, can we have a vote, Vladimir?
Sure. Committee member Amadian?
Yes.
Committee member Bain?
Yes.
Committee member Kadikian?
Abstain, I'm not understanding what we're voting on. I'm sorry.
Hang on, this is a motion that recommendation, A, recommendation, B, deleting all this very specific language that's here, uh, and having language that says the city will continue to explore and implement, uh, options that limit increases in pension liability.
I'm against deleting, so my vote is no. Thank you, committee member Manning?
Yes.
Committee member Masias?
Yes.
I apologize, was I yes or no? Committee member Masias?
Yes.
Thank you, committee member Michaels?
Abstain, I'm not sure if this information is going to remain in the report, and my question was not answered.
Committee member Milano?
No.
Committee member Nelson? Committee member Wilson?
Yes.
Committee member Finch?
Yes.
Committee member Vans?
Yes.
Committee member Zakarian?
Yes.
Committee member Paulus?
Yes.
Uh, we have two noes, one abstain, and nine yeses.
Mr. Holt? Luke, Luke, uh, you want to move up to number three? Sorry about that. Okay, um, so this recommendation is, uh, to be clear, there are two recommendations, uh, potential recommendations, I should say, uh, regarding transparency. At the request of Mr. Milano, you recall from last time, we have added number four, uh, and these are distinct, uh, recommendations. The first one, number three, is, is essentially more limited than number four. Um, number three, um, fundamentally, uh, would require, uh, that when labor agreements are negotiated, that, uh, that the city would, uh, specifically list in whatever reports there are, uh, that go with the recommendations of the, the MOUs, um, what the, uh, essentially the band that CalPERS allows us to negotiate in based on what their actuarial assumptions are, uh, uh, without increasing unfunded liability. It's, to make a long story short, it's roughly two and a half to three percent per year. Uh, and that's actually, CalPERS publishes those, so they're a known thing. The other piece, uh, is really, uh, that the city would, in addition to the costs that are driven by an MOU specifically in terms of increased pension costs, which the city already reports on, uh, when they're, they're passing MOUs, that the city would also be reporting on how much the, uh, CalPERS, uh, contribution is going to increase or decrease as a result of, um, uh, what we've talked about before, which is, is, it could be, uh, because of reduced, uh, discount rate or, or whatever. Um, so that you, you would have what amounts to what I, what I call, when I do bargaining, the So that you, you would have what amounts to what I, what I call, when I do bargaining, the cost of doing nothing. Before you ever gave a penny away at the table, your pension costs went up the equivalent of two percent of wage in a given year. That's about what's happening. And this would have to be reported along with the, the other costing of the MOU. So that's, that's the concept behind this proposal. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Holsman. So if, if, if I were building a motion based on this recommendation, I would say that the motion I would like to see us make is to recommend that the city increase the transparency of its MOU negotiations in any way possible. Increase public access to the negotiations as much as is possible. And that detailed analyses of the impact on the pension liabilities be incorporated as part of that information provided.
So let me respond just briefly. So I, I should have gone on to proposal number four. Luke, if you go down there, does a lot of what you are suggesting in the broader points about transparency and negotiation. Number three is a more limited proposal on those.
Excuse me, I see that you have this is a slightly different version. I'm looking at the old one. Can you scroll back up so I can see?
So I added this. This is in your, in the. So to be clear, that was the, three is the narrower one. It was the one that was in your earlier package last week, or in the, I should say, it was on the screen last week. Four is, is Mr. Milano's broader, broader point regarding transparency and labor negotiation. So I, I broke them out frankly because I perceive them, one as being somewhat different. One has to do with transparency of the labor negotiations more broadly, and the other is a narrowly focused issue on, on, on the pension. And partly too, because I sense there might be a different sentiment in the committee about the two. So I wanted to make sure we explored both options. Mr. Milano?
Yeah, Mr. Olson. I generally like the tone of section three. Although I believe that part of my intent was to encourage the type of data that will give them the level of transparency when they make a decision. So if, for example, the city were to increase the number of steps or particular classification from nine steps to 11 steps, in addition to any other benefits. If I were in city council, I would want to know what would be the impact going out 30 years, right, at least 30 years, so from the point that they're retiring others. What is the overall cost? Because what appears to be a small number today, you know, the beauty of compounding is that this number could be huge 30 years from now. And, and I don't know how to word this particular, or add to this particular statement. Because what I'm looking for is the transparency and the clarity. So when they say, yeah, for this particular position that is making, let's say, $280,000 a year, an additional three percent will turn into, you know, X hundreds of thousands 30 years from now. So that's where I'm going with something along the lines of the quality of the data that the city council receives when they're evaluating any particular change. And it probably is occurring right now, but to my knowledge, I'm not too sure.
Well, let me, let me just say, because I've been exploring that too, and I, and I'm interested in it. I have to say the difficulty is actuaries are, are, are not really willing to tell you how much any given wage increase, for example, or any, you know, will add to unfunded liability, any particular one, because they look over long periods of time. And so, for example, when, when you ask Bartel and Associates, well, what if we were to limit wage increases generally? Let's say, we, we say that no wage increase will be greater than two percent. Well, they're not going to give you credit for that in an actuarial world because they believe that eventually you're going to pay market. Even if, if you're, if you say you're paying two percent. So that's the challenge there. I don't disagree with your intent on that. But it, but it's a little bit mechanically challenging. I'm not hearing much debate on this generally, and I can also work on this a little bit more. I'm sorry, Mr. Milano. Looks like you have.
Thank you. I think more of the qualitative nature of the information. What is the information that the city council should have, given all the limitations that you stated, right? That allows them to have the, the most likely scenario to make a wise decision going forward. And unfortunately, it's kind of tied into the, to item number four. Because since we don't know what's taking place inside, I'm basically making the assumption that they, they possibly don't know, right? So in ignorance, it makes it very difficult to make a specific recommendation when the second part is the one that really would actually wrap around this whole thing, right, in a way.
So let me, let me say this. I, I, I mean, what, what I would ask is that the committee pass this and let me continue to work on drilling down a little bit on how much, I mean, I, I, I'm in general agreement that as much information as we can reasonably get about effects on pension should be provided. How we do that and how far we can go on that may require some open-ended saying they need to work on that kind of issue. I'll see what Mr. Manning has to say as a, as a pension expert.
No, I'm not saying anything as a pension expert. What I'm saying is that I think, why don't we take a straw poll on whether we've got general agreement of these points and then just delegate to you to drill down on it the way you suggested.
That's great. Okay, here, can we, can we do that? Vladimir?
Committee member?
Yes.
Committee member Bain?
Yes.
Committee member Kadikan?
Yes.
Committee member Manning?
Yes.
Committee member Masias?
Yeah.
Committee member Paulus?
Yes.
Committee member Milano?
Yes.
Committee member, committee member Wilson?
Could you just clarify what, what exactly I'm voting on?
Actually, you're voting on number three, all of number three, with the understanding that I will also try to, you know, refine it and, and possibly see if there's more information we can extract that relates to the pension effect of the compensation that's being.
Okay, you know, and, and just, I, I'll say yes, and, and to express my wish to Santa Claus for clarity.
Thank you.
Committee member Finch?
Ho, ho, ho.
I, I agree with Ms. Wilson that if it, if it's just clarifying that during negotiations that pension costs are, I get, I, I know that they're calculated as part of the process. So is, is the clarification that of how that's presented publicly, is that what we're voting on?
So this goes a little bit further than, than what you normally calculate in, in, in. So normally, when MOUs are shown, and the costs of MOUs are shown, you will show the, the increased cost of pension that's driven by the MOU itself, which is to say the, the wage, you know, if you pay one percent more in wage and you have a 60% rate, then, then it's one, you know, 60% of one percent, and that will all be shown. This is suggesting two other things, at least two other things, maybe more. One is that we actually show the amount that the CalPERS pension contributions are increasing in that year, not just due to wage, but in general. And, and second, it's suggesting that that we publish, CalPERS tells you how, how much a wage can be before it increases unfunded liability. So we can't specifically calculate what that increase in unfunded liability is, but what we can do is publish along with MOUs what, what are the parameters that CalPERS provides, that the actuary provides for, for, for that. So, so it goes beyond what you're currently doing.
Okay, yes.
Committee member Finch, your vote is yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee member Vans?
Yes.
Committee member Zakarian?
Yes.
Committee member Paulus?
Yes.
Thank you. We have all the yeses.
Yay. Okay, thank you. So number four is, is much broader, and there are two main components to number four. One is a form of what is referred to as COIN. And COIN has to do with transparency, it's, it's transparency measure that came, I'm now spacing on where it came from. Anyway, I can't believe I came from.
Costa Mesa?
Costa Mesa, thank you. Good. You know, you get south of San Luis Obispo, I get very vague on things. The, and so that's, that's A, which is these concepts like having outside negotiators, independent auditors analyzing costing proposals, disclosing all proposals within 24 hours, requiring council members to disclose communications with employee organizations, publication on the website, 30 days of tentative agreements for 30 days prior to council ratification. The, that's, that's all COIN stuff. The second thing, which I think I heard Mr. Milano say, so I included this, is what we in the, in the negotiating trade call fishbowl bargaining, which is essentially public negotiations. So I'm including these because Mr. Milano made the point last time that that was something that he felt should be included in consideration. And so this, this is obviously a great deal broader and, and affects the collective bargaining process itself. Mr. Milano?
Yeah, Mr. Olson, I, I just want to make sure that members of the committee appreciate the following. In the cities that I have looked at, that are basically running this open MOU negotiations, there are some variants where they actually, the tactics are, the, the, the public is not privated. So the city council could be defining their tactics and the unions could be defining theirs, but the actual negotiations are in public. If we truly are proposing that a city moves towards its intended objective of transparency, I think this adds significantly to it. If it is the objective of the public employees to continue to earn the trust of the general public, you know, as we have done now by understanding that the sal, the base salaries have been pretty moderate and considerate, but it is that the pension portion is really driving it. You know, those, that clarification helps the public raise the level of, of trust and confidence of its public employees. And I think this type of transparency has been done before, has been done effectively, and has shown no negative consequences that I've gathered. So I want to encourage that we live what we say we do, that we support transparency. And this will be a move in the, in the right direction for the general public. Thanks. And I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
What is the motion?
Actually, that's a good point. Mr. Milano, I'm assuming that you're basically moving that we approve the recommendations in A and B here.
That's correct. We approve the transparency and openness in negotiations.
Yeah, that is what, what I seconded.
Thank you. Thank you.
Committee member Amidian?
Yes.
Committee member Bain?
Yes.
Committee member Kadikan?
Yes.
Committee member Manning?
Yes.
Committee member Masias?
Yes.
Committee member Michaels?
Yes.
Committee member Milano?
Yes.
Committee member Nelson? Committee member Wilson?
Yes, yes.
Committee member Finch?
No.
Committee member Vans?
No.
Committee member Zakarian?
No.
Committee member Paulus?
No.
We have four noes and eight yeses.
Okay, next item. So this, this one is very near and dear to my heart. I'll say that. I, I know I shouldn't weigh in. So this is the issue of creating a policy to accelerate the pension, paying down, paying down the pension liability. And there are a lot of kind of subtleties in this because there's also the question of how you do it, whether you would do it through 115 or CalPERS or some combination thereof. I'll give you an example. Palo Alto funds its 115 plan up to one year's pension liability. And then when it gets over that point, they take the money and they put it into CalPERS directly. So you have a number of choices as far as, you know, ways in which you could create a specific policy. One is the Santa Monica model, which you, you probably have seen in their recommendations, which is essentially that you would have a fresh start approach that would give you, and even, they, they proposed paying it off over the entire liability off of, over 13 years, paying a, a, a steady amount of money over each of those years. It would basically mean you're paying a lot more on the front end and, and, and less on the back end. The, I should say, less in the middle, probably more on the back end. So there's that. There are also plans to contribute a minimum amount to 115, to the 115, such as the one year, and set a target balance above that. There are, if the, if the 115, so that's one possibility. Another, which I personally have used, is to have contributions that match the expected discount rate or return rate. And what you do is you take the difference between the actual return rate that CalPERS has set, say 6.8, and say 6.2 or 6.0, the Bartel folks are basically saying it's going to drop to 6.0. You figure out how much more you should contribute if, as though it were 6.0 now, and you contribute that. So there are a lot of different ways you can structure one of these policies. There are many, there are many choices. I think the broadest point is that, that the city have a policy that would accelerate their putting aside money and that it be a firm policy so that, you know, it, it isn't just a question of whether you have money left over. One thing you need to know about this approach is absent the POB, obviously, this would compete with other priorities, obviously, that the city has. The city, as I understand it this year, for example, has a very tight budget. And so, you know, to put it in, you know, not too subtle terms, the money has to come from somewhere. And so the question is whether essentially the city would establish by policy a strong priority. And then the question beyond that is which, which policy? But I think, I think the first question really is, 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 is whether this is the kind of recommendation that you want. And then we can drill down on the more specifics.
I have a question, Mr. Olson.
Sure. Mr. Milano?
On the next item where you actually have the POB, since, for example, if I have a preference towards a pension obligation bond, but I'm totally against the 115, this seems to be, what's our position if we say yes on this thing and then yes on the POB? I've, you know, putting them one before the other seems kind of odd for me, as opposed to. To me, the 115 is like the bull person combing over the hair, right over the bull spot. Really not doing anything and doesn't leave the city with much option. The, the pension obligation bond, to my thinking, based upon what we heard, seems to be a much stronger option going forward, much more solid. So what should we, should we be considering this first and not the other? I'm, I'm sure if saying yes to this thing limits to some extent what we're doing with the POB. There's a question to you to clarify for me.
John, you, you were raising your.
Yeah, I was just raising my hand to, just, just to say that if the committee did decide to go with the 115 trust conversation first and make a decision on that. and then had a conversation with the POBs, that particular conversation could be contingent upon, you know, doing away with the 115 if they decide to move forward with the POB. So really, one doesn't have to come before the other necessarily. If you decide to vote in the, you know, something with respect to the 115, and then we go on and have a conversation, and the recommendation of this group is to also recommend that council approve or at least investigate the issuance of pension obligation bonds. Perhaps a recommendation could be that if council moves forward with the issuance, that the existing 115 trust be liquidated in the manner in which the 115 allows.
This, why don't we at this point allow conversation on both of the items? And then we'll see how it shakes out a little bit, and then we can do motions. Because it might be helpful. Mr. Manning?
Very broad, yes. Very broadly, could we start out by saying that we recommend that the city create a policy or policies to accelerate pay down of pension liability and then discuss all the various possibilities with the pluses and the minuses, rather than recommending any one thing, but giving the council the information that they need to make a choice of policy or combination of policies that will implement the obligation.
Maybe what we should do, because it sounds like there could be universal agreement on this question of your broader statement of the question, and maybe we nail that down first and then proceed to a little more conversation on detail and see how people want to deal with it. We have a couple of hands raised. Ms. Wolfson and then Mr. Kadikian.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Holtzman. Yeah, I was going to say, actually, I agree with Mr. Manning. And I also think that this recommendation is more than just the 115. I think this recommendation is a more general recommendation that the city develop a policy and a strategy for accelerating the pay down as a second decision might be the mechanism by which we recommend they do that. Thank you.
Mr. Kadikian?
Yes, I would agree with what Mr. Manning said and with what Ms. Wolfson have said. Basically, that's what I wanted to echo as well, that we recommend that the city create a policy to accelerate pay down of pension liabilities, and we can give them these different options. The Santa Monica option, the one-year funding of Section 115 trust option with subsequently the rest going to pay down CalPERS. Those are all good suggestions, in my opinion. So, but the general overall policy is what should be voted on, and that would be to create a policy to accelerate pay down of pension liabilities as fast as possible.
Let's ask this. On that point, is there any objection at all? I mean, again, these are straw votes. I don't think we have to follow Robert's rules. It'd be nice to know whether there's any objection at all to that broad statement.
I would second what Mr. Kadikian just phrased very nicely.
Okay. I'm just not even going to take a vote, though, if there's no objection, because just, I mean, just to speed things along. Okay. All right. So, so good. So we have our, we have our statement of policy at least. So then, well, before you go back, wait, I want to dwell on this a little bit more. So then the question really becomes, I mean, I could certainly work to elaborate these options. I think the question is whether there's more, I mean, and I can give them, you know, whether there's more specific guidance that the committee wants to give. And I can, the report will have much better, and we'll have examples of policies from other places attached and things like that. So there'll be a lot more detail here. But the, you know, one thing I did hear, and I think, you know, there is a little bit of conversation about it sort of beneath this, is the concern about the 115 plan. And actually, Mr. Taktalian had mentioned earlier that, you know, that there is a question of, you know, kind of, what kind of guidance this committee wants to give on the 115 more specifically. And let me sort of frame it a little bit. And again, this might also, the POB could wipe out this question. But the, so the 115 currently is being used as more of, as I understand it, and John, help me if I'm, you know, wrong, but essentially a stabilizing mechanism. And that's how it's currently works. It obviously could be used to put more money in to help prepare for paying down debt. And it's also a bit of a hedge. So the interesting thing about the 115 plans is that by and large, they're invested somewhat conservatively. So they're more conservative than CalPERS. They don't have to be, by the way. It could be invested less conservatively than CalPERS. But in reality, most jurisdictions, and I think yours is one of them, invest their 115 a little bit more conservatively and kind of, as I recall, get more of a 6% return as opposed, or will seek more of a 6% return than a 7% return. And so they also do operate in that respect as a little bit of a hedge if everything goes to heck. So there's some real positives there. You know, on the other hand, you are taking money, putting it someplace that's earning six, and CalPERS is effectively charging you 6.8 on the money that they don't have. So in that respect, and at this point, it's been made by various committee members, I think, in the course of our discussions. So I guess the question at risk of, and I know we want to get through this, but at risk of elongating this is, does the committee feel that, you know, we should have some specific recommendations around the 115?
Mr. Holtzman?
Yes, Mr. Milano.
If I were to have the transcripts of all of our meetings available and did a search on Section 115, I don't think that throughout our meetings, there's a phrase as common as this one. It's like from beginning to end, someone's trying to sell, that's the way that I feel. Somebody's trying to sell us on Section 115. And after all of this, I'm still not convinced. The, Mr. Kadikian presented a very wide and general approach to it. I think that covers it pretty well. And, but I think this thing is like, it continues to emerge again and again and again in just about every meeting that we have. The, and I have yet to be decisively persuaded that this is going to be of any benefit, tangible benefit financially to the city. So I just figured that Mr. Kadikian's suggestion, the last that he presented that we all concurred, or listed that, that was fairly persuasive for us. I think it's sufficient. I don't think that we should be giving one on Section 115. That's my point of view. Thanks.
John, and then Mr. Michaels.
I almost feel like there's maybe a bit of a misunderstanding in terms of what the request is. The request for this committee to consider isn't whether or not the city should establish a 115. That's already been established. The city council has established it, and there's $40 million in that account. Absent a policy or some direction from this committee, there is really no rhyme or reason with respect to the council continuing to put more money into it or how council actually disperses money out of that account. So this committee has actually quite a bit of levity, actually leeway, in terms of what, how that account is used, what purposes that is used for. Should the city continue to completely close that account down? Should it continue putting money into it? Or should it use it as a hedging account? Because as we learned earlier, there's going to be, there's going to continue to be a rise in the pension cost over the 10, next 10 years, after which it starts coming down. If we're going to use it as a hedge, then perhaps one of the recommendations could be maintain the account as is in today's dollars and begin to withdraw a certain amount over a period of four, five, six years to limit the impact on the general fund, having to pay the additional UAL. So I just want to clarify, we're not asking for any kind of guidance. We're trying to, you know, twist the committee's arm in coming up with some sort of an advantageous policy for the city or its employees. It's merely seeking direction on what this committee, having clearly talked about it every single meeting, as the minutes would show, according to Mr. Milano, how those funds should be best utilized.
John, if I just may add something, John, John and John. Just, it's, we've kind of talked about it, but with the 115 trust is, and John is right, there's about $40 million in the account. If you send it to PERS, they do earn a higher rate of interest, but you start getting into those discussions of rate of return risk. And that's well documented with CalPERS over the last 20 years, and that's why cities do it. That's why they put in a 115 trust that's less risky to hedge the rate of return risk from PERS. And then, as John noted, over the next several years, we know where our rates are going based on all our actuarial studies, is to hedge that risk. So I just wanted to offer those comments as well. Thank you.
Mr. Michaels, and then Mr. Milano.
As a direction of policy, the 115 trust is simply defined as special piggy bank that the city can put money into and would be able to invest at a higher rate of return than if it were sitting in the general fund. So in that sense, it's a tool. I have no opinion one way or another. It's a tool. The city has it. The city should use it. As far as a point of policy, I'd like to go ahead and concur with the general direction of the committee in that we use that to pay down the unfunded liability as quickly as possible. From a point of policy, my recommendation is to pay into CalPERS directly at the unfunded liability as opposed to fund a large amount in the 115 trust to pay it at a later date, to have something in there as a hedge or short-term use if you're looking at hedging the returns for two or three years into the future. I can see that as a viable tool. But my recommendation as policy would be to use the funds and use the 115 trust to pay down the unfunded liability as quickly as possible, not simply to hold it there for many years.
If I, I know there are a bunch of hands up, but let me just throw this into the mix. You know, I personally am kind of a fan of the Palo Alto approach, which is to have a target amount of one year in that fund. Remember, one other thing, but one other advantage of this fund is if you have a serious financial problem, you can use it to actually pay CalPERS. Whereas if you pay CalPERS the money, it doesn't change what you're paying in in any substantial way. So it does provide some degree of flexibility that I think the committee should consider. All right, let's see. Mr. Amerian and then Ms. Wolfson.
Thank you. Yeah, I think something that, you know, is not being considered is the flexibility that the Section 115 offers the city. Now, I would say that what we have discussed in past meetings is that there isn't really a codified policy purpose, mission statement that's written out regarding the 115. And best practices would probably dictate that the city, you know, kind of make a decision regarding that. So if it's going to be smoothing out, which I think, by the way, you know, the biggest years that we're coming up against in terms of unfunded liability are, you know, three to five years in the future here. And that's when the uncertainty of whether or not we fall, you know, right in the 50th percentile of what we're projecting versus the 25th percentile versus the 75th percentile, that's when having, you know, a Section 115, for example, and money in that to smooth those potential, you know, unforeseen circumstances is going to be far more beneficial than if we just hand that money over to CalPERS, especially considering so many people on this committee have questioned, you know, CalPERS, you know, both in terms of their strategy, their investment strategy, and, you know, whether or not they're taking too much risk with our money. And so, you know, I think I don't really have something, I agree with the, I agree with the general idea of paying down, you know, accelerating payments or exploring accelerating payments, you know, to CalPERS in order to mitigate the amount of interest that we're paying. That I agree with completely. But simply just eliminating the 115 or just sending that money over to CalPERS, I don't think the committee, you know, should recommend that, personally speaking. I do think that the city should codify, you know, have it made very clear what the purpose of that money is so that it doesn't become this, this kind of thing like, well, we need it for something else, or we're going to make this decision and change it. If that policy is laid out very clearly, the committee should recommend that that policy be written out. And I really do think that it should be used to smooth out what is going to be kind of the hairiest, you know, five-year period that's coming up, you know, within the next decade. Thank you.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holtzman. First of all, I want to go back to, I think we were talking earlier, and I was of the opinion that this particular recommendation was simply that we suggest that the city formalize a policy that they want to accelerate the pay down of the unfunded accrued liability with respect to, but as long as it's come up and we've been debating this this evening, I thought I would throw this in. Part of what hamstrung the 115 plan was that it was invested in more conservative, probably more fixed income type items. And since we're going into a timeframe when interest rates are going to be going up, that may actually work to the city's advantage inside that trust. Not that I'm suggesting that we increase the 115 trust necessarily. I'm just throwing that out there, that we might see some change in the relationship between returns at CalPERS and returns inside the 115 trust. Thank you.
Mr. Milano and then Mr. Kadikian.
Thank you. I want to ask Mr. Bradford a technical question. Do they manage, first of all, approximately how much are the management fees? And the second part of the question is, is there a transaction in the books having to do with the management fees? Is that a separate line item anywhere in our finances?
Mr. Milano, I do not have that information at my fingertips. I do believe it was disclosed at the presentation that was given earlier to the, to the committee members.
Thank you. The reason why I asked that question is because they were, the answer was not to my liking at all. So I asked him what the compensation was, and just they simply said, well, this, this, we charge X number of points. The, and the number, to my estimate, is in the hundreds of thousands. And if that amount doesn't show up in the books, it's not the kind of transaction that I personally would like. Basically, the city just gets a net amount. It's just, I don't see it as prudent. And I just, I don't have a good feel right now for this Section 115. It's been pushed so hard that they're still listening with a lot of open questions. I'm not making any aspersions on anybody. It's just that I'd like to see the transparency of these transactions going all the way through so it is visible. Thank you.
Kadikian, then Ms. Finch.
Thank you, Mr. Holtzman. I think that the key thing we have to do here is create the policy first and foremost. And then within that policy, we can figure out how fast we want to pay things down to CalPERS directly and whether we want to fund Section 115 trust. And this Palo Alto model that you indicated, which is funding the 115 for a one-year period as opposed to using funds and projecting into five years or six years down the road, sounds interesting to me. It's the first time I hear it, and seems to strike a right balance between the concerns I have with regards to giving the false sense of security. So I look forward to hearing more about that in the report. That's all I'm going to comment about 115 for now, because you brought up a very interesting model, which I would like to learn more about, because it seems to strike the right balance. which I would like to learn more about, because it seems to strike the right balance of the concerns I have and what and what we could use it for. But for clarity's sake, the section 115 trust is really not as some sort of an investment mechanism for us to make more money. It does not. It will not. It's just for the city to balance its budget and at the end of the year, not have a deficit. And which is good and bad sometimes, because it, you know, it it hides the huge liability that we have and prevents us from actively working and reducing that. So this one year plan of Palo Alto sounds a right fit between both competing interests, and I'd like to learn more about it.
Ms. Finch.
I agree with Mr. Amerian's thoughts on this, that I think that the city should look to use this more to smoo- smooth the curve in the outer years. I think that that's going to be a bigger hit to the city, especially looking at where we currently are with our current budget and projections. And definitely put a plan, a policy in place for use of it and the, you know, potential ongoing funding of it that maybe they should be looking at when their salary savings or savings in M and O at any given fiscal year and that that money should be more designated to go towards like the 115 trust balance to continue that, to continue funding that. I know there's 40 million in there already. But if there was more money in there, it would help that, it would help smoothing out the curve in the later years. As Mr. Marion said, in three to four years, that gets at its highest peak.
So so let me, let me ask a question here. I I guess the the question really is, are we good with maybe the broader recommendation right now? And we come back when I've written the report with more specifics around this. Because I'm feeling like, you know, more specificity might help this discussion a little.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Nodding heads. Yes, Mr. Milano.
I wanted to ask Mr. Bradford the following question. If the city were to take $20 million and put it in the section 115 trust, would that show up as an operational expense in the city's books? Versus if you take that $20 million and put it in CalPERS, will that show up as an operational expense? In other words, is there a different way of the impact that it would have depending on where you put the money? That's the question.
You know, I'll have to verify the accounting treatment, Mr. Milano, but we're talking with cash payments. So we're taking our, for example, for the 115 trust, moving it is still, it's still recorded as city cash, city asset. So it's just a transfer of cash from one account to another. There's no expense to be recognized. When it is paid to CalPERS is when the expense is recognized.
Okay, so my my concern, Mr. Holzman, and to the committee members, is this that by putting $20 million into the section 115 trust, let's say you took it out of the emergency fund that the city has. It miss, in my opinion, it understates our operational expenses, right? Because in effect, we have no other possible use of that money except to give it to CalPERS. And yet it is pulled out of the budget and is put out there. It's no longer accessible to the city for any purpose whatsoever, right? Having to do with operations. And it doesn't, and if it doesn't show up as an expense, then we're misstating our financial statements. They are being under, I forgot the term. Anyway, I think I made my point.
I I just want to be clear on a point for the committee. You know, the city's financial statements do comply with all GASB's, all reporting requirements. We just had a extensive financial audit. Our financial statements, as as certified by our independent audit firm, accurately state the financial position and the results of its operations each each fiscal year. So I just want to be clear on that.
Ms. Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. I want to just say one quick thing about this. I don't think that having the 115 trust mistakes in financial statements, actually. It's essentially, it's a contra liability, if you will, to use an old school term. You have your accrued liability, the unfunded liability, and on the other side of the books, you have this asset which is meant to ultimately expire that liability. So it's not a misstatement or an understatement in either direction. In a way, you're grossing up on both sides if you're doing anything. Thanks.
Yeah, and the and to that point, the accounting regulations don't let us net it. We have to show the liability and the asset to that point.
You're right.
In a way, that that confirms my my contention. What I wanted to state is that GASP has made change, just let's say that we used to do in the 2020, 2010, that then they eventually adopted and changed. So GASP can change. But in the meantime, I would, that was my concern, that money put into the section 115 trust would not be hitting the income side of the of our financials. And and I would prefer that any expenditures of this kind be recognized, because then it just spreads all the way around. If you want to find out the real costs of anybody's pay or pension combination, I would want those numbers to be included. And that's just a, I guess I'm just used to trying to recognize income when it happens and 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 operational expenses when they do occur. Thank you.
So what I'm really hearing, though, is I think I think probably we need to move on because it doesn't sound like there's a real motion to be had here right now. And unless anybody really objects, I think that's what we should do. And I'll come back with much more specific stuff at at the point of the report. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, all right, let's do that. All right, so this is the big POB one. And 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 here's, I guess, how I would would frame this. You know, it it there are sort of two pieces of this. One is the validation action. You know, should the city go forward, at least file a validation action, knowing that's like $25,000 and be ready to issue a POB, you know, if 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 conditions allow. Because obviously, we we're in an environment where, you know, interest rates are changing and sort of the testimony before the committee was really, it it could make sense, but depending on what happens to interest rates, it might not. So it seems to me the more prudent recommendation for people who are in favor of the POB, at least, would be to say, do the validation action, get ready, and, you know, and then issue it if 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 conditions warrant.
And Mr. Holzman, if I may.
Please.
I I would really also also specify that it's not just conditions in terms of the interest rates, but the conditions as determined by city management and the city council in terms of what the opportunity cost is of issuing more bonds and 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 how that affects the credit rating of the city, how it affects, you know, other potential projects that, you know, the city might be considering to, you know, offer bonds up for. So, you know, I'm in support of validating, because in the in the large scheme of things, it's a it's a relatively small cost in order to buy the time and set the foundation of potentially, you know, offering that bond, because there's no requirement to do so. However, I I would, I would suggest that the committee, you know, strongly emphasize what the secondary and tertiary effects are of issuing, you know, a pension obligation bond and and to draw attention to the fact that pension obligation bonds are not pension reform. You know, issuing more debt, you know, has serious effects on the city. And I know that I know the city staff understands this, but I just want to make sure that the committee also, you know, takes into account, you know, what what issuing a pension obligation bond would actually mean. Thank you.
Boy, it's rare for this to be so quiet.
Mr. Holzman.
Yes.
I have one comment, committee member Amerian's comment, as presented by Ms. Harold earlier. This topic did come up about what it would do to our credit rating. Credit agencies generally consider this fairly credit neutral as far as a rating impact, because they do consider our PERS payments as contractually obligated payments. So you're really switching one contractually obligated payment for another at typically a significantly lower discount rate. So they've already kind of factored that in, and that I was just offering that for the for the committee.
Mr. Michaels.
To confirm the the process to through around 25,000. If I want to confirm this in it. Well, I'm in favor of adding that as a tool to the toolkit, but I would want to go ahead and make sure, echoing the comments of others, that issuing those bonds is part of a larger process and has a specific goal. Or they're simply just getting a new credit card for for you.
Let let me ask this. If if the motion in essence is to go ahead with validation action and to, you know, consider issuing bonds, assuming that conditions are appropriate and with the understanding, this is a little bit of a long winded thing, that that the conditions include, you know, all of the economic concerns of of staff and of 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 the council are addressed. If that's the motion, is there any objection to that motion?
No. I I would simply add also that this pension obligation bonds be part of the general policy of accelerated paydown of pension liabilities.
Mr. Milano.
Yeah, I, Mr. Kadekian, just word my my thoughts, my sentiments. Thank you.
Perfect. So with that, I I don't think we need a vote, straw vote. Looks like we're we're good. Let's go on to the next thing. So this is one that's pretty straightforward, did not really come up a whole lot in our conversations, frankly, in front of the committee. City and and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think right now is charging safety about 11%, which is about 2% more than than the regular employee contribution. So the the issue with this is it it would be problematic to charge folks who are Pepper employees more than they're already paying because they already have a vastly lesser benefit. So you're you're focusing, if you do this, on a comparatively smaller, you know, part of the the employee population. I don't know the answer. Maybe John does, but in most places, the what we call the classic employees, those are the three at 50s in the safety world, but of course, they're different in non-safety, are usually about 50% of the workforce. I don't know whether, John or Jason, you can kind of shed any light on that.
I'm sorry, can you clarify the question that you're asking?
The question was, was what's the proportion of classic employees to Pepper employees?
Sure. Jason, actually, do you have the specific number off the top of your head? I I off the top of my head, roughly.
I don't, you know, John, I can look it up in a minute.
I want to say, yeah, if you can look it up, but I'll take a wild guess and we can see if I was close. I think 40, about 45% of our employees today are about Pepper. And the remaining 55-ish, I thought, were classic. That number, that trend has continued to increase with less classic, more Pepper over the last few years.
Yeah, off the top of my head, John, that sounds about right. I can I can verify that in short order.
So. I'm sorry, John, one more thing. We can get you the specific amounts of what employees pay towards their portion of the employee employer's share. You said safety was at 11, 11 and a half percent, I think. It's actually higher than that. I just don't want to. It, we have different tiers. I don't want to quote off the top of my head. We can get specifics if the committee wants.
Okay, so the, I'm sorry, let me just finish and then. So there are a number of jurisdictions, although they're mostly in northern California, that have have gone to 14, 15%. Plus, the, I would say that the county systems, the so-called 37 Act systems, very typically have rates in in at least that 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 range. So anyway, with that, let me start with Mr. Kadekian, then Ms. Wilson, then Mr. Milano.
I I would agree with just that we should pursue higher contributions from the classic employees. I don't know why we would not. We should pursue and see where we get with it.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. I think we had already had presentations of what the specifics were with respect to the proportion of employees. I think it was slightly different for safety than it was for miscellaneous, the proportion that are Pepper versus classic and so forth. So I don't think we need to go over that tonight. And I would, I I'm not sure I understand what it is that we're moving or what we're recommending here. Maybe just to simply say, we recommend that when the city is negotiating its MOUs, that it makes sure that proposing increases to employee contributions is on the table as as a negotiating point. I I don't know how else you can do it. It's you're locked in once the MOU is in place. To a certain extent, for how many years it's in effect. Thank you.
It's absolutely set by MOU, so no question about that. Mr. Milano.
Mr. Holzman, Mr. Holzman, the charts that we looked over at the very beginning of the meeting that I presented to you gives you the answer. If you looked at the years between 2001 to 2010, for the most part, you know, the classic employees gave very little to nothing. In fact, most employees gave very little to nothing because of the way it was structured. So it is, I think, very, very crucial for people to notice the fact that when safety received 50% increase in their pension benefits, that there was zero money added to compensate for that 50%, right? And if you look back at the charts that I presented to you, or Mr. Jason presented earlier, it shows very clearly that even though they have increased by roughly, you know, double or nearly double the amount, the the compensate, the payment to CalPERS by the city has grown significantly higher than that. So you have two major reasons. The increase of benefits of 50% where there was no additional contributions being made by either the city or them. And so that's saying it gives us the justification for asking for a higher contribution rate for the classic employees. So I think I don't try to just give you an opinion. I want to give you the reasons why I have that opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Holzman, just a point of clarification. We have always, all employees have always paid their employee costs in the PERS. I think the, Mr. Milano, that you're referring to showed the employee cost share. It's in his number of years. That is when we implemented sometime around 2010, 2011. I could pull up the graph and I don't have it. But that's when employees started picking up a portion of the employer cost. I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I I I concur. There is no, I have no qualms with that representation. But it is important to know that historically, when those employees got a, that additional benefit being calculated back to their original date of hire, right, which is for some of them who retired early, 2001, that was 30 years worth, without having to add anything to it. And we still have a a remnants of the classic employees that I, in my opinion, they should be carrying of a larger amount of that of that pension cost. So anyway, I I agree with with this general statement of this particular. So anyway, I, I agree with, with this general statement of this particular point.
John and then, uh, Mr. Zakari.
I would just say to, to really provide a full picture, Mr. Milano's point is, is true. There, there is a contingent of plastic employees, um, who, who did get that benefit. There's also a large contingent of, uh, employees within the organization, myself included, who started in two thousand and two and has, has paid their, their share of the cost from the very beginning. So I am a classic employee who never received a retroactive benefit and is only paid into the system. So I just want to make sure that as we're talking about this, we don't paint classic employees with a single brush. And I know you're not trying to do that, but, uh, you know, I, I need our employees to also hear, um, that there is a little bit of a difference.
Mr. Zakari.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you for the time. Uh, I want to echo with, uh, with John, uh, Mr. John Tatalian said in addition to Mr. Bradford as well. And also to put it on record that I, I do believe, uh, police and fire, um, are paying actually the most into Calpers being close to fourteen percent. And we do share that cost with the employer like Mr. Bradford and Mr. Tatalian were also saying. And as far as, you know, the, the continued, um, interest in, um, the employee contribution going up as we saw with the first initial graphs that were presented in this meeting. Um, I think we're kind of seeing the, or trying to illustrate the fact that the, um, basic average increase in wages was about one point six percent from what you said, Mr. Holzman. And, uh, one of the committee members did also mention that we weren't accounting for the cost of the increases, increases being above that in addition to health premiums and everything else that goes out of there. Uh, making wages actually kind of less than what we actually presented. So I'd, I'd, I'd like to also express that as we move, uh, forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zakarian. Uh, uh, Mr. Macias.
Thank you, Jeff. I just have a quick kind of question. I was wondering if it was ever presented to us, what, uh, the appropriate amount of contribution from the employee side would be as if they were a private sector, uh, employee contributing to define contrib- contribution plan, trying to receive the same amount of benefits? Cause I, I understand a lot of employees are paying, you know, the share that is asked for them. But I would be surprised if it's still not, um, a lot less than what they're, they're getting in, in the end.
Okay. Um, well, I, I guess, um, just to frame this, uh, if there's interest in it, um, uh, the, I think that, that somebody, uh, had sort of already suggested that, that essentially the city, uh, you know, uh, continued, we're being sort of nonspecific, but that the city, uh, 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 proposed increases in employee contributions. I, I had added the language to say the desirability of making such a proposal should be considered in the context of all other proposals on the time, time bargaining, overall compensation comparability, uh, uh, as well as recruitment retention considerations, um, that, you know, and the reason for that, and again, you know, you don't have to take that language either. But, um, you know, one of the challenges, um, uh, of, um, increasing what people pay is, is precisely really, uh, what Mr. Zakarian kind of suggested or alluded to, which is, you know, if you're only giving a one percent wage increase and then you're going to take, ask people to pay, I'll just make this up and say two percent back, you know, it can be very problematic, right? And, and it can create recruitment retention problems. There are all kinds of, so I think you have to be very, um, you know, my experience is it, a lot of it sort of depends on when you've got an opportunity to, um, to do something like this, uh, where employees are getting enough money that they, you know, can reasonably be asked to pay for it. So, uh, and, and I, one of the problems with this kind of issue is when you do comparability studies, which I do regularly in all my bargaining, um, the amount people pay into pension is considered in those comparability studies and people look at that, right? And so the question becomes, are you, you know, are you competitive? So it matters. Uh, and it's not always possible to do this. So I guess my, my point is that I think, you know, a general statement that we should look to increase it, you know, where, where possible essentially is, is probably the best statement.
I appreciate your input. I, I would just say that we're not, we don't have to necessarily compete against all the cities by providing the best benefits, the most lucrative ones. You just have to compete against the entire labor market and public positions and benefits. In most cases, vast cases always outweigh what you get in a private sector. So even if you decrease ours by ten or fifteen percent compared to other cities, you'll still have a healthy pool of people who are going to want to work for the city for the labor protections, the fringe benefits and everything else.
Mr. Milano.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, it's, uh, it's wonderful to, to see, uh, a, a level of conscientiousness in, in the topic. What I wish I had to show, uh, to everyone are the, the actual benefits being paid out today to retirees. And, and the numbers are, to, to my mind, are, are pretty shocking. So that if we ignore the actual distribution of their pension, once they are retired, if we look further down the road, then you will see that the justification basically increasing it now for the portions that they was not contributed insufficient amounts that had been done. The, um, one of the statements that I made earlier was imagine someone retiring at age fifty-two, let's say, who was earning a percible amount of, let's say, a hundred and eighty thousand. And you carry that for the full life of an individual and I wish them all a long life. Well, it could be thirty, forty years, right? And it may actually wind up to be hundreds of thousands of dollars of annual pension, right? In the very elderly years. And so my question is, if that is the benefit that they will be getting, right? Can we then go back and see us here today and say, can we ask for more of them today? Because let's not forget that future benefit really means a significant amount of money in the millions of dollars to each person. So, um, so if we only look at one side of the situation, it may seem unfair, uncompetitive and so forth. But I will just remind everyone that I did mention that the University of Southern California, you know, with thousands of employees, they have a defined contribution plan. Five percent plus a five percent matching. So let's be realistic. What we are paying in pensions today are a multi-million dollar for the life of that pension to that each individual. So to ask upfront for a larger share, I think that's something that council should look at and maybe they should have the data available. Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to get a sense of where people are. So is, is somebody willing to make a motion here?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we include in the committee's recommendation that, as you had it in, I think it's in the outline, uh, that the city, uh, each, in each MOU negotiation, make sure to include, uh, proposing higher employee contributions as a negotiating point.
I second that. So any, any, any debate or should we move to, uh, and we've had a lot of debates. So, uh, can we move to a, um, a vote? All right. Sounds like yes. So Vladimir.
Committee member Amirian?
Yes.
Committee member Bain?
Yes.
Committee member Chadikan?
Yes.
Committee member Manning?
Yes.
Committee member Masias?
Yes.
Committee member Michaels?
Yes.
Committee member Milano?
Yes.
Member Milano?
Yes.
Committee member Nelson? Committee member Wolfson?
Yes.
Committee member Finch?
No.
Committee member Vance?
No.
Committee member Zakarian?
No.
Committee member Paulus?
No.
AGS's four nos.
Okay, let's move on to the lobbying and initiatives. And Luke, remind me, or is this the last item? I'm just trying to remember. Uh, no, we've got the litigation item, uh, and the contracting out item. Okay. So we have three more. Okay. So, uh, I'm not going to say very much about this. Uh, you know, I, I honestly, I did not really have a sense until last week whether there was any appetite at all, uh, for, uh, um, initiatives that, you know, we can't ourselves do, that they're really lobbying positions. I would say also, uh, I had some, uh, uh, member Manning and I had some, uh, good conversations about a little three, B three here. Um, this fiduciary duty issue is, uh, it turns out a little more problematic than it appears on the face of it, uh, because the concern is if the, um, fund has a fiduciary duty to both the, essentially the employer and the employee, how does it reconcile these fiduciary duties when they're contrary to each other? I think is that, Mr. Manning, kind of the, the broader point?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good summary of it. Uh, it's, it's very hard to reconcile the two. And I, I brought that up because I've been in the position of having, uh, conflicting obligations and I know how difficult it was to, uh, to reconcile those. So I, I brought that up to the point of discussion with Mr. Holzman, just to have him explore that.
I would just say that, that, that I, I, I think that could be a concern. Uh, I, the flip of it, and I don't exactly know how to word this, uh, and I didn't have enough time to, to, to get it squared away is there is certainly a sense, and I represent a gazillion cities, uh, and there was certainly a sense, if you're a Calper city, uh, that, um, it can be very frustrating. They are, aren't necessarily terrific at answering questions. They don't really, they don't really value their participant cities, their state fund. And they do seem to listen to the state to some degree, but at least my subjective experience with them is, uh, that working with them, if you're a city, can be kind of frustrating. I don't know. I mean, I should really ask Jason, I guess, and John, whether that's been your experience.
I, I have a comment, if you want, if you want to recognize.
Sure. And I, I, I recognize you.
What I, what I have, the biggest problem that I have with Calpers, among all the other problems that we have, is why would Calpers take on the idea of pushing for an increase in benefits as they did back in two thousand and one? If the purpose of Calpers is to basically maximize the investments, right? That the cities and employees are bestowed on them for, to manage on their behalf. Why would they push so hard throughout all the cities in California with a three percent of fifty change? In other words, to say, increase the safety by, you know, benefits by fifty percent. Why would they take on that type of advocacy, which means that they'll have to pay out a lot more? That is a, is a, is a complete baffling thing unless they were responding to the lobbying effort of police and fire. Right? Being an arm of police and fire associations to push for this thing. Other than that, I cannot imagine anyone who's, whose obligation is to maximize the returns, to have sufficient money available to push for additionally increased benefits of the magnitude that we had back then. So the legislation to the extent that the cities are, they are an agent of the cities and have that recognition. And therefore they should have policies that would respect that. So it's not just the employees that they have an obligation to support in their retirement. They need to make sure that the cities don't go bankrupt in the process. So anyway, that's why I think legislation is.
Mr. Bain?
Just a, a quick side on Mr. Milano's comment before I go on. Encouraging increased benefits also encourages increased cash flow to them. And any advisor I know encourages that. So just an aside, um, your item B here about freezing are, I guess it's B two, sorry, encouraging the freezing of a plan. He only addressed one version of the term freezing. A second version of that is freezing the plan to new entrants, but continuing the current benefits for the existing, which gets rid of the issue of we still got to provide these guaranteed benefits some other way to employees. Lets those benefits grow, mature, get paid off and eliminates the liability for future employees, which many companies have done. And to comments being made, a 401K plan may be the replacement for the new hires. The existing employees live out their existing plan. And to me, that one is a bigger issue because it doesn't interfere with benefits to existing employees. And yet it also is not allowed.
I'm sorry, we could add that here. The muting is going to drive me crazy. Um, uh, that makes sense. Uh, okay, uh, Mr. Kadikian followed by Ms. Wolfson.
I mean, I would absolutely agree. We should give the option to city council to start some sort of a lobbying effort in, 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 uh, you know, getting other cities to, because we all have the same problems. So there, there's a strength in numbers and I think definitely we should reach out to other cities and we should give, uh, our city council the option to go ahead, the recommendation to go ahead in those directions, particularly such as Mr. Bain suggested with regards to allowing, uh, different retirement plans such as 401K and such. I, I think we should lobby. We have nothing to lose. Why would we not?
Miss, Ms. Wolfson?
Thank you, Mr. Holston. Yeah, I, uh, first of all, I would, I would say one of the things that, um, about this, this, um, eight B three, it was never my intention to, um, parse it at the level of fiduciary responsibility. I think that's where it gets into problems, as you mentioned earlier. But I do think that Calpers, uh, has a somewhat imperious attitude, as you mentioned, towards, uh, its customer cities, if you will, and, and that's where I see perhaps some hope and some progress. I feel that the strongest, uh, thing I would like to see is an encouragement of transparency. In your outline, you've limited that to the investment portfolio, but I would like to see, uh, Calpers open itself more for transparency about all of its, uh, operations and, and by which I, I mean, including uh, campaign finance of its board members and other goings ons, uh, at the, at the organization. Thank you.
All right. Well, I guess, uh, the question is with those amendments, uh,
Mr. Holzman, R is occurring here, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Well, it's totally, okay. If, you know, I, I, I kind of backed this. If the, if the problem is Calpers, then let's go ahead and knock on Calpers' door. But to suggest, um, things, uh, of nature that might put us in the same situation as San Diego was to start talking about 401Ks and then have that be a lawsuit and put the city in more liabilities, uh, obviously that's not what we want. Our overall goal is to protect the city, its residents and the well-being of the employees and the people who live and visit in Glendale. But if it's a problem with Calpers, then absolutely, let's go knock on Calpers' door and, um, not ours.
Let me, uh, Luke, can you just page go up a little bit? I'm just trying to see, um, so, um, the, that sounds like, I'm just trying to think, it sounds like you support, you don't support, I guess I should say, uh, B little I, I think, based on that comment. And I, I, I'm a little unclear on, on, on B double I, but it sounds like you do support potentially three I and, uh, and, and. and the four little i, you know, little i. Is that, am I putting words in your mouth, or is that kind of where you are?
Um, Mr. Holtzman, could I, could I recommend a wording of this? That this is very, it's very unwieldy because it's so lengthy and in a way, there's like too much details in there. I feel like what we really want to get is, you know, where does the committee concur as a recommendation? And I feel that the basic here is that this committee feels that the city should pursue on its own and in coordination with other like-minded agencies to pressure CalPERS to give better terms to its, you know, contracting agencies and to be more transparent about all of its operations. Does anybody want to second that?
Okay. With Mr. Zakarian?
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
I'm sorry, did you, you had your hand up? I just wanted to.
Oh, no, that was for the original comment. I'm okay.
Okay. What's the, well, since there are no seconds on that, uh, could we have an alternative motion?
I would move the motion as indicated with all four points. We should, there's no harm in trying. So instead of a motion, I would take a straw poll to see if the committees in general are okay with eight in its totality.
Yeah, Mr. Holtzman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, you know, the committee has kind of spoken about this issue, and, you know, we spoke about it during the last issue, during the last meeting as well. You know, I think recommending that the city pursue lobbying and initiatives, I don't think is realistic. Presenting these as potential options, you know, is something that, that's fine. I mean, it's going to, it can go into the report, but I don't think that the committee should be recommending that the city be the tip of the spear when it comes to, you know, recommending, you know, legal action or lobbying or organizing. It's just, you know, I think there are other things that the city should be focused on that are more in, you know, the realm of realistic possibilities in terms of an efficient use of the staff's time. So I'm not against these options being presented as potential options for cities to pursue, or even the city of Glendale to pursue. I am against recommending it as something that the city should pursue because I don't think that there's, you know, the committee has any, you know, real want for that, just evidenced by the fact that there wasn't a second to Ms. Wolfson's motion. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bain and then Mr. Milano. Oh, and then Mr. Manning.
I think I somewhat agree with Mr. Amerian on that, and I think that that can just be wordsmithing in your final document as this isn't a, a short-term recommended solution, but other helpful things that the city could pursue.
Mr. Amerian and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Milano getting a little punchy, and then Mr. Manning.
Thank you very much. I, the reason why I did not give a second to Ms. Wolfson's proposal, it's not that I disagree, it's that I, it was too vague. I think that the city council needs to have specific points to say, these are some of the potential things that the city could do. Let's not forget that Pepper must have come out of meetings exactly like this when cities were pressed significantly in all kinds of agencies throughout California in 2010. Initiatives at the legislative level comes from the willingness to explore, a willingness to try something that someone has not done before, to see where it leads. When we take a look at the fact that we are looking at pension payments of around $100 million a year for the next 10 years, and then we're concerned that maybe we're going to take a little bit of staff time? Are you kidding me? No, we have to take a look at the magnitude of the problem that is facing us and take the appropriate action to take as big a bite as possible. And if it means from different directions, that's going to take the effect. Yeah, so being concerned about expenditure of staff time, given the amounts of money of a billion dollars or more to spend or a multi-billion dollar bond issue to get rid of CalPERS, these are minor items that nonetheless may pay off handsomely in the end when CalPERS begins to feel the pressure coming in, right? From the legislature, maybe from the governor, from other cities, from other entities, that we need to have major structural changes in the way CalPERS does business. Remember that we would not be in this pickle had CalPERS come, came, would have been able to come through with that 8.25% annual return on investments, right? We wouldn't be. So pretty much it's in their, in their court. So I support the idea of moving forward as Mr. Kedikian stated. Let's accept this, take it, move forward.
So let me suggest maybe a way through that sort of marries these things because the reality is that you're at best going to be able to join or even lead coalitions, right? And so it partly depends on what's actually pending. And so maybe, maybe the thing to do is to make the broader recommendation that you, you know, engage in, that the city engage in lobbying to, you know, and then we have, you know, to increase transparency, blah, 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 blah. And then, you know, with, with, you know, and then say, you know, some specific goals that, that the city should sort of work towards are, and then you pick up these items, you know, below. But you're not really saying, hey, you know, because there may not be, I mean, let's be real, it's a democratic legislature, probably not going to change in our lifetimes. And, you know, some of these things are, you know, probably pretty unlikely. But on the other hand, there are other things like the transparency issues and the better governance issues, you know, that are real possibilities in our lifetime. And so I guess maybe the thing possibly to do is to sort of state this a little bit more broadly and then list some specific goals that, that the city, you know, you'd like to see the city work toward. I don't know. Mr. Manning?
Well, I was just going to say that I agree with Mr. Bain and Mr. Amerian. I don't want to want the city of Glendale to seem like we're just raging against the heavens here and being, I think that it would be ineffectual. And I really would not like to see the city engage in actions that are just going to be ineffectual.
I'm sorry, Mr. Holtzman, the first sentence says, although not something the city can do on its own, the city could partner with others. Nobody is saying lead the charge and, and be Don Quixote against the windmill. I mean, I don't know, it's pretty clear, the first sentence.
Yeah, but the reality of the situation, Mr. Holtzman, is that you are right. This is a, this is a legislative issue. It's codified in the California Constitution. And what it comes down to is that this is, this is a legislative issue. If the voters want, if Mr. Kedikian wants to organize a league of voters in order to transform the legislature in order on this issue, great. That's fine. If that's how he chooses to spend his time and his money, that's wonderful. But the reality of the situation is nothing that the city is going to do in terms of organizing a bunch of cities is going to change the fact that there's a super majority, that this stuff is codified in the constitution, you know, the Californian constitution. And it's just spending time on this, more and more time on this, I think is just not an efficient use. So, yeah, it can be, it can be listed in the report that these are potential actions for the city to undertake. But in order, I don't think this committee should recommend it. And I think there's a somewhat consensus here, you know, of that. You know, there is, there's a small vocal opposition to it, and then there's a consensus, and I think we just need to get to that consensus and, you know, move on. Thank you.
If I may, first of all, I don't think that the minutia of everything that CalPERS does is codified by the state legislature. I think there's room for organizations like the League of California Cities and for alliances between various cities. There's room for that to be an effective force to effect change. And I think that's really what this recommendation is about. Now, whether there's a consensus or not, you know, sometimes a person has to stand up and, and be counted for what they believe in, whether everyone else agrees with them or not. And I will say that it has been known to occur in history that occasionally the heretic turns out to be right. Thank you.
Ms. Finch? Ms. Finch?
Sorry, I wanted to just state that I am in agreement with the approach that was presented by Mr. Amerian, Mr. Bain, and Mr. Manning.
So can we get a motion from the Amerian-Manning coalition here? And let's see how that flies.
Sure, you know, I move that the options presented be included in some aspect of the report, but not recommended as, you know, something that the city council or that the city should undertake.
Mr. Manning, is that, is that acceptable to you as well?
Oh, sure.
All right, well, let's, let's take a straw vote on, on that approach. Vladimir?
Do we have a member Amidian?
Yes.
Do we have a member Bain?
Yes.
Do we have a member Kedikian?
No.
Do we have a member Manning?
Yes.
Do we have a member Macias?
Yes.
Do we have a member Michaels?
Yes.
Do we have a member Milano?
No.
Do we have a member Nelson? Do we have a member Wolfson?
No.
Do we have a member Finch?
Yes.
Do we have a member Vance?
Yes.
Do we have a member Zakarian?
Yes.
Do we have a member Paulus?
Yes.
Thank you. Three noes, nine yeses.
Okay, so that's how we're going. Um, and on to the next one. So litigation became sort of, I think we could just take a vote on this because we had a pretty thorough, thorough debate on it, unless anybody wants to debate it a little bit more.
Mr. Holtzman, I move that, similar to number eight, that these options be outlined in some form as a potential universe of options, but in no way be recommended to the city council.
Mr. Holtzman?
Yes.
Okay.
Hang on one second. First, or not? Second, somebody?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Milano.
All right. Before you take a vote, can I ask all the committee members? If you have not read the documents that I submitted for you to read, if you have not read the documents that prompted the city to move to the 3% at 50 back in 2001, if you did not read the documents having to do with the CAFER or CalPERS, the financial report for CalPERS, which substantiates my claims, if you have not read it, then you should not vote on this because that means that you don't have the knowledge. It is absolutely critical for you to understand what tort is and what are the conditions under which a city, right, undertook this action. From the very beginning, I posted information that took me a long time to get. It is how the city council came about making that decision, that amazing decision in April of 2001. And all of the indicators that I see there is false information, misleading information, and actionable items that could be taken to court. But if you have not read those documents, you would not be convinced simply by my words. You have to actually see it and read it and understand it. Broad in any form, right? Especially when you can prove some type of intent. It may be difficult, it may be expensive, but the benefits could be so huge to the city that it's worthwhile considering it. When a benefit significantly can change the outcome of your future negotiations and the future financial state of the city, I think it's by all means is worthwhile doing. But if you have not read the documents, you should not vote on it. You should abstain.
So let me just add a little bit of flavor here. I'm not going to weigh in one way or another on, on the lawsuit question, except to just elaborate a little bit on some of the challenges here. So I was there when CalPERS sold 3% at 50, and not to Glendale, but to many of the jurisdictions I represented. And, and I completely agree with Mr. Milano, shockingly, on, on the fact that CalPERS misrepresented it. They misrepresented their status, a lot of those sorts of things. I mean, the fact of the matter is, there are still documents to this day that show that CalPERS was saying that, that wouldn't have to pay anything ever, basically, for this. So, so I completely agree. That said, as a lawyer, the law, you know, the difference between thinking that CalPERS, you know, did something really bad, which by the way, I don't think there's a ton of disagreement about, at least not in my world. And, and winning a lawsuit, given, among other things, how much time has passed and, you know, and the fact that CalPERS, you know, I mean, it has buildings, but as far as assets go, most of its assets actually belong to other agencies. You can't, we can't be taking other agencies' money, et cetera. I, you know, I don't want to weigh in on this. This would be a question you'd be asking the city attorney ultimately, but I can tell you, having dealt with a lot of jurisdictions that are just as unhappy as you guys are, that, you know, the challenges are very formidable. I'd also say CalPERS has language in its contract. That means that if you lose, you pay the air fees, not just, not just your own. So I'm not, I'm not weighing in one way or another, but I'm just, I, I, I would just emphasize that if the question was, did CalPERS, when it was still under, frankly, leadership that, that, that was, that I think was very, very pro-union, you know, actively sell 3% at 50 and actively understate its costs and actively do a lot, I think that's true. But I just, I just don't know that that answers the entire question of whether a lawsuit is even viable.
And Mr. Holtzman, if I may, I don't think anybody on this committee would be against you wordsmithing that into some sort of part of the narrative and introduction to the background of the entire mess. I don't think we would be here as a pension review board if, if that weren't the case. So, you know, the motion saying there's a second, you know, and we entertained, you know, Mr. Milano, you know, telling us how and when we should vote. So I moved to call the question.
What hands?
I still have my hand up here.
Yeah, yeah, with, with, if you don't mind, I think there were a couple of hands up before you called the question. I think it'd be better to call on them and then, then do that, if that's okay with you. So Mr. Kedikian and Mr. Michaels had their hands up.
We had a discussion with regards to the city attorney looking into this. I'm not sure where we went with that discussion. We did it at the beginning of this meeting. Have, did we decide anything on that regards?
I think, I think we deferred it to this discussion right now.
I see. Okay. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Michaels, and then we, see whether we, oh, wait, I think we have, and Mr. Macias.
In regard to the lawsuit, I'm looking to see, my decision is based on whether or not I believe it's going to be successful. I don't see, yes, there were problems. If there weren't, we wouldn't be here. But as far as anything that is actionable, I don't believe that there is anything criminal as others have suggested. And to to prove fraud or neglect, there would be no benefit. It would still go back to the taxpayers to have to pay for that. So in that regard, Calpers as, Calpers doesn't have assets that it owns that it would be able to forfeit. Calpers just manages other people's assets. So even if we were to be successful with a lawsuit, we would have to pay in to Calpers to pay the judgment to pay us back. In any way, the person who would be paying for the results of a lawsuit would be the taxpayer. And I just don't think it is a good recommendation to go into litigation, have that expense when there really is no benefit at the end. This isn't a Scooby-Doo mystery where if we unmask the villain, he'll point to a cabinet where he's kept the sacks of money that he stole. Everything is gone. There really, I don't see a benefit to what the litigation would produce.
Okay, Mr. Macias, and then we're gonna, we're gonna proceed to a vote.
Thank you. I think I agree full-heartedly with Milano and then what Mr. Holtzman stated. Really just speaks volumes to the state of of government and why so many of these committee members are upset about the current situation and government employees and we, I won't say we have a clear case of fraud, but we know there was a lot of wrongdoing, a lot of lying that is demonstratable now, and and a lot of the members agree. And even if we cannot have, you know, monetary damages, you know, a successful lawsuit or pushing it to the Supreme Court could have a huge setback and and shape the way that PERS is run. Even if we win and the monetary damages is one dollar, you can still affect change in that way. And having this attitude that, well, they screwed us now, there's nothing we can really do about it, so let's just keep moving on, is why the political system and the government system is so toxic to begin with. It shows that if you get something passed, wait long enough, well, then you're untouchable. And so is is the government system in place. And so I full-heartedly agree with Milano with at least making the effort to, you know, expose this issue. And even if ultimately we can't get monetary damages, if we could affect change and get rid of the people who are controlling PERS, you know, that would be a benefit in itself.
Okay, let's proceed to a vote on Mr. Marion's motion. Do you want to restate it so that everybody can?
Yes, I move that while this be documented in the report as a potential in the universe of possibilities, that it not be recommended to the city council as, you know, an action that the committee recommends that we do, that they undertake.
All right, Vladimir?
Do we have a second?
There was a second, as I recall.
What, second?
Well, maybe not. I don't know. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
That's right.
Committee Member Amidian?
Yes.
Committee Member Bain?
Yes.
Kedikian?
Abstain.
Manning?
Yes.
Matias?
No.
Michaels?
Yes.
Milano?
No.
Nelson? Wolfson?
No.
Finch?
Yes.
Vance?
Yes.
Zakarian?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Three noes, one abstain, eight yeses. Thank you.
Okay, and the last item of the night, contracting out services. So I I just think you've, I put a couple of bullet points in here. Obviously, contracting out services could reduce the city's normal cost, but it doesn't reduce the unfunded liability at all. And, you know, again, I'm not weighing in on this, but but the another point is, it, to the extent that you contract with other government agencies, you obviously potentially pick up, you know, that, well, you do pick up their their liabilities with respect to pensions. The, so that's, you know, kind of the negative, obviously, the the, you know, the potential positive over time is that to the extent you contract out to private employers, et cetera, that don't have pension plans, you know, you potentially save some money on an ongoing basis. Mr. Milano?
Thank you. I've I want to remind everyone that until nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Glendale had a private ambulance service. And the expenses of the city annually for that service was five million dollars. Things have changed dramatically since then, ever since we came up to this particular monopoly. If we had a private service then, there is no reason why we cannot have a similar private service now. The idea that we are going to impact only the unfunded actuarial liability is a very short-term thinking. Yeah, we will have additional costs that are incurring as a result of what was transpired twenty years ago, no doubt about it. But we have to think long-term, you know, thirty years out, forty years out, in what it actually means. The fact is that we have monopolies in place that prevent us from getting a the type of value in terms of the city's financial stability that it merits for the city to look at. And I don't think that any of these things should be off the table. Many of the individuals who benefited from the three percent at fifty were retiring with two, three million dollar pensions, right? Well, they got the benefit, right? They already can basically pocket that and and live a good retirement life. But in the meantime, one of the things that we have not done is look at the financial impact of the, all the things that the city could have done, right, with that money that we lost. And we'll continue to lose at a hundred million dollars a year in pension payments. So looking at every possible way of finding alternative ways of of providing for the services is something that the city should be going forward. You know, these guys already benefited incredibly well. I think it is time for us to do what is necessary for the quality of life of the city because at the end of the day, that's what elected officials sometimes are there for. Thank you.
Mr. Manning and then Mr. Kedikian.
Okay, I don't think the tail should wag the dog. I think the primary consideration, you know, this is something that the the council really, it it's really up to council as to whether or not we should have city services provided by city agencies or whether they should contract out to the county or any or somebody else. The primary consideration should be the quality of the service. It's a cost-benefit analysis. And obviously, as Mr. Milano says, that we we need to carefully quantify the costs. But we shouldn't just, I I don't think we should be making a recommendation here. I think we should maybe recommend that the the city take a look at the overall structure. But I don't think that we should recommend that we contract out city services. I don't think that the pension obligation should be the consideration that determines what council does here.
Mr. Kedikian and then Mr. Zakarian.
The city already contracts out services. We contract out the trash collection at this point. So the city does contract out services, and I think the city should continue contracting out services when it's feasible. So I would move for a motion for the city to continue contracting out services when it's feasible. That's all, as it does already.
Mr. Zakarian and then Mr. Michael.
This kind of hits home to me. I'll try to get through it as fast as I can, but being a part of the CPF and the IFF and understanding how contracting out services specifically for fire would affect us. And number one, the city really wouldn't have any power or wouldn't be able to manage the employees that they hire, which relates back to the quality of services that we have. You would get who the county does give you in addition to the staffing of it as well. Our city has always, this fire department and the police department has been built on the staffing, has been built on the class one rating, has been built on what we offer as a city, as a fire department, as a police department, to what our residents want and what they need. And as a person who was born and raised in the city, who has family living in the city, to take away that safety factor of any of my family members, any residents or visitors that come through, our city is is actually just not even a topic for me to discuss. In addition to that, yes, Mr. Milano is correct. You know, nineteen ninety-eight, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, you're right. Times were different, and they are different right now. Just in the last twelve years of me working for the city, our call load has doubled. We went from running about maybe twelve thousand calls in two thousand and ten to running and topping our biggest call volume of over twenty-one thousand calls in two thousand and twenty-one. And so times have changed. In addition, in two thousand and twelve, the city lost, well, fire department lost twenty-one positions. And we gave up those, the positions and compared to our sister cities like Burbank and Glendale. The Glendale Fire Department with this leadership of not only the city, but the fire department itself, from Chief Lawns, continues to be the most efficient and yet have the least per capita firefighters per hundred citizens as we speak right now. We we continue to do more with less. So as far as contracting out, you know, services, contracting out city services to the county, to me is not even a topic of discussion. The fact that our employees have taken an oath, and me personally, I've I've experienced this on January sixteenth of two thousand and twenty, where I risked my life for four people hanging out of a window. And for me to get something like this and actually get injured because I fell through the floor for one of my my brothers on the force to go save his life, is a very strong topic for me. I do not suggest that we even take this to council. Our members and the people of this city deserve the best. We've always hired the best, and we continue the best job led by the leadership of the city and the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels?
In all negotiations, I don't think any options should be taken off the table. But I do believe that significant analysis should be done for each issue, looking at any department that is going to be considered for outsourcing. When you compare the considerations, a department that is run by the city, the city has much more control over that department as far as personnel, cost savings, budgets, than if we had contracted out. So I, as one of the other committee members mentioned, the integrated waste franchise system for commercial and multifamily accounts, that was contracted out. The initial result, costs increased by a factor of five. So before those recommendations are made, I would want to see a significant amount of analysis and also include how the departments could be changed, managed, the budgets could be changed. I don't think that we can make one recommendation, or my recommendation would not be to propose contracting out services, but put that into part of a larger plan and do that with greater analysis.
And, oh, Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Holtzman. I'll try to be really breezy. It's so late. I I just was wondering, was this part of one of our presentations? I just don't remember this topic coming up in our prior meeting as being something that was on the table.
That's a terrific question. My recollection, and I I could ask Luke, was that it came from something Mr. Milano had submitted. But I could be wrong about that.
I I'm sorry, I just didn't remember.
We tried to comb the submissions by individual members to try to make sure we presented everything that people had. I'm not, I'm not sure we achieved it, but we tried to throw a pretty big net.
John, this came up in a presentation from Best Best and Krieger about specifically the point about whether, you know, that the city would have to divest managerial control over this function to avoid getting sued, or not sued by Calpers, but being treated by Calpers as still obligated to pay pensions.
But I I think that, I don't know, Mr. Milano, was this, was this, help me with this, was this, I seem to recall was something that you had suggested.
Yeah, it was probably one of several things that I had included in some of my, some of my comments. The the idea, I think it was embedded in part of a study on the ratio of managers to employees. And and the discrepancy that I saw there, that I figured it could be a possibility of savings by having the services being provided by organizations that don't have quite the ratio of managers to to rank and file. So anyway, it's one of several things of review with regard to the way that the city performs its its functions. And I I agree with Mr. Michaels. At every turn, we have to take a look at what are the benefits that we are measurable, right? And whether the costs and savings justify those outcomes. So it's not simply a random presentation to say, just go ahead and, you know, replace this particular unit for a for a private sector entity. It really is an overview of how the city's practices with regard to management, how many managers I needed, what the type of performance there are. And then, and as part of that, they may actually find out that there are some services that are better served, you know, by contracting out. So it's a general term in terms of all of the things that the city must consider in order to reduce its pension obligation long-term.
Mr. Bain? Mr. Bain?
Well, I do, well, I do agree that the city needs to consider things like this. I do not think that we have sufficient information to even recommend that this is remotely a good idea. I don't see anything on, you know, how response times might change, what the real cost would be. And I agree, I think the city is always looking at ways to outsource things. But I just don't think our focus has encompassed enough on this to make a recommendation that they should specifically look into it.
Agreed.
Mr. Milano, and then then let's let's have a motion after.
Yeah, I think I can wrap it up here. When we were faced with the additional incremental cost of of paramedic, we did come up with a with an alternative to be able to reduce that. So now we have like a two separate tiers of of ambulance or paramedic services. The, and and they are, and unfortunately, this is not a a discussion on on employee performance evaluations because as such, they're, that's really an entity, an activity that should be handled perhaps for a different entity in regard to productivity and outcomes that the city needs to do. So I can, I'm okay with whether this is going to be included or 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 just added on as one of the additional items to be considered. But either way, I'm okay.
Can we have a motion?
Are you asking me for a motion, Mr.?
Hey, no, you're, I I think, I think since it sounds like it's going the other way, it'd probably be better to have a motion that I I guess, I think the motion would be that.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Holtzman.
Sure, thank you.
I make a motion for the city to continue, as it does, contract out services when it makes finance, when it makes sense in the opinion of the city management.
I have a second motion I was gonna do, but I was waiting for Mr. Kedikian to finish.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, let's, I I I'm just not, I guess, I'm a little hesitant because I'm not, I'm not sure how close to the consensus that that is. But that's fine. Let's go ahead and vote on that.
Committee Member Amidian?
No.
Committee Member Bain?
Yes.
Kedikian?
Yes.
Manning?
No.
Macias?
No.
Michaels?
No, I wouldn't want a discussion before the vote.
Milano?
Yes.
Nelson? Wolfson?
No.
Pinch?
No.
Wenz?
No.
Zakarian?
No.
Alus?
Go.
We have eight, we have eight no's and three yeses.
Okay, would somebody else like to take a shot?
Um, I'd like to make a very simple motion, uh, that we do not make any recommendations, uh, uh, about item ten at all. I don't think it needs to be in the report. It's not really a, it's not really a pension issue to my second.
All right, there's a second, uh, uh, Vladimir.
Is there gonna be discussion on this particular motion?
Uh, we, I, I sort of thought we had completed the discussion, but if you'd like to say something, that's fine.
Yeah. All of the elements that impact pensions should be on the table for consideration. From the number of employees to the number of management, to the ratio of management to employees, to the level of productivity, everything should be on the table as a way of covering the whole universe of issues that are relevant for the city council to reduce this obligation. We're looking at a multi-billion dollar, uh, obligation by the city, significant amount of payments and significant reductions in services by the city in order to hold on to this particular pension structure. So everything that impacts pay would impact pensions. And so therefore, subjects like this are germane to the topic of pensions. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
And thank you, Mr. Holtzman. I do want to say that from my, from my perspective, one of the most important things that the city, uh, offers, and I'm sorry, I'm so tired that I'm, I'm not as eloquent and as brief as I usually like to be. But, uh, for me, the city is in the business of providing service to residents and other stakeholders. And the essential thing of that is, is quality of life. And we have talked about quality of life. We've talked about how the financial strain of the pension liability impacts on quality of life. But, but now I want to talk about quality of life in another sense. And that has to do with the fact that we do have our own police department and we have our own fire department. And I will tell you that when I was shopping for my home, that was a critical piece of the puzzle for me. Um, it may not be the same for everybody on this committee, but it was an important thing to me because I know that that makes a difference. Um, and, uh, so that's, that's basically, uh, why I feel that I seconded this motion. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a vote, Vladimir?
John, real quick, can you just restate what the, what the motion actually is?
I, I meant to.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So the motion is that this be not any part of the report.
Okay, thank you.
Committee member Amidian?
Yes.
Bain?
Yes.
Kadekian?
No.
Manning?
Yes.
Macias?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Milano? Mr. Milano?
No.
Nelson? Wolfson?
Yes.
Pinch?
Yes.
Wenz?
Yes.
Zakarian?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yes.
Two no's and ten yeses.
Okay, folks, we have made it to the end of the list. Uh, very good work. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
I've, um, Mr., Mr. Wilson?
If we have item number five.
Oh, hang on a second. Uh, Mr. also, Mr. Milano had a comment.
Yes, thank you. I've, um, I wanted to make sure that the, the information that we discussed at the very beginning, uh, those charts and graphs as part of your preamble to set up the, uh, the city situation be included, right? And be part of the preliminary report.
I, i- i- it was my intention to include, uh, uh, at least a number of them. I'm not sure, you know, there are four different classifications, and I'm not sure I want to put all four of those in, but, but, but everything else, like the, you know, the, the graph showing the numbers going off the chart and all that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there another item, Vladimir?
Item number five, reports on information.
Oh.
A five A correspondence received from committee members. Does anyone have any comments about item five? I don't hear anything. Item number six, adjournment. May, may I have motion and second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we're adjourned at ten forty-five PM. Have a great night, everyone.
All right, thank you for all the seconds. Bye.